This Tampa City Council meeting, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If everybody would please rise for a moment of silence and a recognition of what happened in Minneapolis yesterday morning with the senseless loss of life through gun violence, once again affecting children, too many children in this country have died as a result of gun violence. Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote please.
Miranda, Maniscalco, Hertek, Vera, Carlson, and Clint Bennett.
Here.
We have a physical call.
I'd like to receive a motion to approve the minutes from August 7th and the evening session of August 21st. A motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda. Okay, we have a request for item number two from FDOT to continue that item to 9:18. We have, can I make a suggestion on this one? Maybe, maybe it's out of order. This, this came from, it's been on the agenda since 2020. Could we have this removed from the agenda, maybe rethink how, what we're asking from them more specific and I think-
Well, it was, it was on the agenda, on the CRA agenda for many, many years before that, and I suggested moving it-
Right.
-to city council, because before then it only was affecting CRA areas. And so, we moved it so that they could update us on whatever they wanted citywide.
I was just thinking, I was just, and I was thinking maybe the two of y'all or somebody come up with something very specific, ask for, you know, about specific projects maybe or-
But could we-
Well, we actually did that. That's what they're going to be doing in September, is coming with specific projects. But I think after their September vote, after their September presentation, maybe we can revisit.
Okay.
But I would suggest, instead of taking off the agenda, maybe we do, as you say, and narrow the scope and-
Well, like, remove this one and introduce a new one.
Yeah.
So that it's, it's current and applicable today, so maybe we could-
No, I don't want to remove it.
Just this one today, we're removing.
We'll continue this one and then have it removed in the next, okay. So I have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilwoman Hertek. Is that good?
Sure.
Okay, to continue this item until September 18th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. I have a, need a motion to remove item 76 from the agenda per Councilwoman Hertek's request.
And the only reason I'm moving this, or removing this, is because we had a pretty lengthy discussion already this month about stormwater during the stormwater budget.
Absolutely.
It's not that we're taking it away, we're just giving them a due break moving forward. They will have the report on, online, I believe, but that we will go to next month to talk about stormwater.
Okay, so we have a motion for Councilman Maniscalco, a second from, Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, remove it from the agenda. We have a motion, or we have a request from Councilwoman Vera to continue item 77 to November 6th.
So move.
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye. The ayes have it.
We have a thing from the written staff reports.
We have a motion to receive and file written staff reports. Is there anything else that was on here that's-
There's a request that the annual report of body worn cameras be discontinued, but I, I still think that's relevant and important.
Yeah. I don't know, what, what is it, what's everybody, other councils thought about that?
Are you going through the staff now and-
Written staff reports, just-
I would leave it on, just, you know, when they were, when they, when they were, they were in test phase and then they expanded them and the community was in favor and the police were in favor, so it benefits both. It's not for or against anybody, it's just giving an update on what's going on.
Well, this is another one of those items, so this has been on since '21. Would it maybe, would someone like to take ownership in this? Let's, let's remove this item from the agenda and then come back with something that was-
Well, it's not removing, it's not removing from the agenda, it's like, it's asking you to, there's a written report, we're supposed to receive and file it, and then maybe Councilman Vera, since it's his, his committee, to talk to the chiefs about the modification of it.
Sure.
Okay. Delighted. So, can we, can we approve the chief's request to remove this and then Councilwoman Vera will take an I O U to, to rework this in a more applicable way?
I mean, maybe I can speak and, and update y'all on it next week or-
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we're just going to receive and file the written reports at this point. We had a motion from Councilman Miranda, or Councilman Maniscalco to receive and file, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
But there are two.
That's right.
82 needs to be continued to September 4th.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek to continue item 82 to September 4th, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, and the reason Ms. Wynn told me was that it's, the PowerPoint is ready, but it needs to be a little clearer for understanding, so it's, it's truly just moving to next week. We're not moving this forward.
Gotcha.
This is, this is about Julian B. Lane River Center and the transparency and new policy updates, and this was, this was something that Councilwoman Henderson was working on very closely, so I don't want the public to think we're stopping it, but we're just moving it to next week.
Okay.
And then the written tree canopy study needs to be continued to November 6th, and I didn't-
Oh, so move.
I mean, that's-
Yes, I'll, I'll move to-
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson to, to continue item 83 to November 6, 2025, as per what's from staff, a second from Councilwoman Hertek. A second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no. The ayes have it, unanimous.
Can I, can I just say real fast, the idea of this was that we could take a snapshot after the hurricanes, and it was supposed to have been done a year ago, so the longer we wait, the more chance that development will get in and we won't have an accurate reading of what the hurricanes did.
Okay, very good. The staff report, there will not be a staff report, and everybody wish Chief Bennett good thoughts. He's not feeling well today, so he won't be here, but I believe he's going to be watching on, he'll be watching us on TV and available if we need him, but no staff, no administrative report today. Let's see, are we done with the agenda? Anybody else for the agenda?
Yeah, we just need to go through staff reports.
Okay, so, oh, staff reports, who wants to-
Can I, can I say one thing before I get a letter from the mayor?
Yeah.
I misspoke the, 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 this tree canopy was supposed to have been done several months ago, not last year.
Okay.
So, just to correct the record.
Correct, record corrected. Councilwoman Hertek?
I definitely want to see the revised reimbursement resolution for 69, so I'd like to keep that on.
Okay, so we want to, we want staff for 69. Do we want staff for 70?
We already had the discussion, so I think we can just approve it.
Okay, 71. Eric Weiss is available. No?
Just announce it, Mr. Chairman, so the staff listening can know whether they're-
We do not require staff for 70 or 71.
Thank you.
72.
No, and I just want to say I'm really thankful that Hillsborough County is giving us $13 million to fix their intersections.
Just in case you didn't detect that, we do not require staff for item 72.
Or 73, because they go together.
Or 73, you're right. And 74?
Yes, there's a PowerPoint.
Okay, there is a consultant available for 74, so we're going to look forward to staff's report on 74. 75?
Just written information, I'm, I'm good with that.
Councilman Carlson, that's yours?
The staff doesn't have anything more to that, there may be people here in public comment that want to speak, but for now, the neighbors in, in this particular area are going to handle it with staff and see what they really get.
Staff, we do not need your presence for item 75. We've already dealt with-
Should we just receive and file it?
We will do that for, yeah, motion to receive and file?
So move.
For all, for everything that we did not require staff report on.
Well, actually, wait a second, if I can.
We still need to hear public comment.
Yeah, especially on the big ticket items.
Yeah, yeah, we-
So when you're done with the consent docket, we could go back to the ones that could be moved and do it after that.
Well taken.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Attorney Shelby.
You're welcome, sir.
Very good. Okay, motion to approve the agenda.
Do, do we need to talk about the substitutes?
Well, we can just deal with them when they come up, no?
Okay.
For 77, was that already moved to November 6th?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, okay, and I would defer to Councilman Vera to an acknowledgement for some special guests we haven't changed.
Yeah, thank you.
I want to approve the agenda.
Okay, motion-
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion for Councilwoman Hertek, a second for Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the agenda is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to welcome students from Realizing Exceptional Achievements at Community Hospital. Realizing Exceptional Achievements at Community Hospital is also known as REACH, is a Hillsborough County Public School Adult Education Program that provides training and support to young adults. REACH offers each student an opportunity to explore career options, utilize public transportation, and improve self advocacy and social skills that will ensure their potential as successful, independent, and contributing members of society. So I wanted to welcome these nice folks here, and I didn't know, Mr. Chairman, if it would be okay if each student just came up and if, if they're comfortable and, and gave their name, there's about a dozen, would that be okay?
Hearing no objection, approved.
Thank you. If y'all want to come up and give your names, we'd, we'd be delighted, and thank you.
You can bring her to the stage, you can just say your name, y'all want to line up right here? There's a microphone right at the podium.
Cameron.
Good morning.
Hi, Crystal.
Good morning.
I am Emma.
Morning, Emma.
Connor. Carter Newdeck.
Hi Connor.
Andrew Fowles.
Good morning Andrew.
Jeremiah, nice to meet you.
Hi Jeremiah.
My name's Samantha.
Good morning Samantha.
And we're the teachers.
Sonia Gonzalez.
Malika Reynolds.
Would you like to say something about the group?
Well, these students are amazing, and they all utilize the city transportation to get to and from the hospital, that's where they work at, so we love heart, we love everything about the heart bus line, and they really, really help us out for our students, so. Thank you. It's all that. Thank you, thank you for having us, we really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you all for showing up at the city council this morning, we appreciate it.
Happy to have you.
Thank you, and, and thank you, and I wanted to thank our Hart board member Gary Hartfield for starting that clap, so there you go, thank you Gary. Thank you very much, and I won't break sunshine by engaging with you on that clap, but, so may I introduce Mr. Clemmons?
That's, I was just gonna say, we're gonna move on to item number one, and this is Councilman Vera's item, would you take it away, Councilman Vera?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. I'd like to introduce Mr. Clayton Clemmons, who is introduced, who is the Executive Director of Project Focus, a nonprofit organization dedicated to supporting young people with developmental disabilities. Clayton oversees strategic program development, partnership cultivation, media relation, and other efforts geared towards expanding the organization's impact. His long-term vision includes developing a state-of-the-art living community where persons with developmental disabilities can learn, thrive, and live independently. He leverages his background in politics, government relations, and strategic communications to drive Project Focus, Project Focus's growth. He also holds a lot of other different, wears a different hats, he's a proud University of Tampa graduate, and is also a CrossFit coach and volunteers with many different organizations, and they live in Seminole Heights. So Clayton, if you'd like to come forward, sir, so I invited him over because Project Focus is starting to work on getting exposure for this large housing initiative they're trying to do for people with intellectual disabilities, and we just wanted to give you five minutes or so, sir, to talk about it to the community, so go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman Vera. Thank you, Mr. Chair and council members for having me today. I do have a PowerPoint that's going to have some brief photos that'll play during this presentation. As I, I would also just like to commend Councilman Vera for his efforts in continuing to support young adults with developmental disabilities, and all of the council's efforts in addressing our community's needs. As I said, my name is Clayton Clemmons, I'm the Executive Director of Project Focus, but before I go any further, I'd like to pause in-
Clayton, can you pause one more moment while I admonish somebody for talking in the back of the chamber? Mr. Stephen, Mr. McAlini, would you please have a seat and stop your conversations that is interrupting our proceedings?
I was interrupted.
Thank you, and if, if we had a timer on him, you can reset the timer, thank you. Good, I'm sorry, continue.
No problem. And, as I said, I just want to pause and discuss my why. So, if we could have the slideshow back up real quick. My why is my nephew Rhett. He is 10 years old, and at the age of, well, in utero, he suffered a stroke. He suffered from infantile seizures for a year and had half his brain disconnected, and he is the reason why I am here today to advocate for Project Focus. So I invite each of you today to reflect on your why, why you ran for office, what gets you up in the morning, what's your purpose, and what that legacy is that you want to leave. Project Focus is a nonprofit dedicated to supporting young adults through education, workforce, and life skill development. We support an umbrella of, we are the umbrella nonprofit supporting other organizations. Under that umbrella, we have Focus Academy, a public charter school for middle, high school, and transition students. It was founded as a place of joy by some parents and advocates here today behind me. We have the Focus Cafe, it's located in the Temple Terrace Rec Center and serves as a job training site for our students year round. Focus Forward is an adult day training program for 22 to 30-year-olds and up, focusing on life skill development, socializing, connecting with the community, volunteering. We have a workforce readiness training program we just launched through the state's VR program, allowing us to adapt the material, to, to gear it towards the population we serve. And we just launched our Focus Day School, allowing us to serve grades three through six, you know, expanding our services to support younger students, which is crucial. You'll just see some photos now from our programs as I continue on. But thanks to our founders, Loretta Gao Lopez and Josephine Eisenberg behind me, we utilize drama therapy, the arts, mental wellness, a different approach from other programs, and it's the foundation of all of the programs. These tools create growth, foster friendships, they help individuals connect with each other, belong, and they contribute meaningfully to our community. And this program to this scale is not being done in any setting that we know of anywhere else. And today, we serve over 160 students and young adults every day in our current programs, and our waiting lists are growing. In the community, as you'll see, we've developed dozens of community partnerships with local businesses, nonprofits, and government entities, and that helps us build our job training programs and our ability to have our, our population connect with that greater community. We collaborate with USF, the University of Tampa, to educate that next generation of leaders, and we host seminars to support our parents and our families as they guide the very complicated and complex government systems that they have to and will rely on for many of them the remainder of their lives. So some of the greatest concerns we hear from our families are, are very similar. Workforce, what's going to happen when I'm not there, and where are they going to live? And that's what makes Project Focus's vision for the future even more important, and it's why I joined the call. It's to build a community within the community, a place that I hope my nephew Rhett could call home one day. Here are some more awesome partnerships out in the community, but what is next for Project Focus? And you have a folder in front of you that has the renderings as well, but I don't want you to get too hung up on the buildings itself, but the vision for the community. And in that community, in the vision, it includes housing with access to amenities and services in the larger community, public bus stops, green space, what you would envision for your family members. A workforce training center that has ground floor activation opportunities with retail and commercial partners, like Feeding Tampa Bay and others, where we can set up job training sites that support our students throughout their, their academic careers, but then also meet the community's needs, whether it's solving a food desert, or providing additional vocational rehabilitation training. And then the final piece is a new place for our Focus Academy, and because of the importance and focus on the drama therapy, we also include a community theater that we hope to be activated with fellow nonprofit and for-profit partners. And so, in closing, Project Focus, my team and I, we're working hand in hand with our local, state, and federal partners to bring a vision, a sustainable community model to life here in Tampa, and I understand, and my team understands, that this is no easy task, it's, it's not an easy lift, but we are here to get it done, and we understand that to build a community is going to take the community behind us. If you haven't been to our campus, I would encourage you to come check it out, because it's probably one of, as my founder says, it gives Disney a run for its money. And on that, I would like to thank you for your time, and I would entertain any questions.
Councilman Vera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Clayton for your, for your words and your presentation and all your team that's here, a lot of good people who I know well and everything, but you know, what, what, I wanted to bring you here because what you're talking about is something that is the top of mind of parents raising people with special needs and intellectual disabilities, which is where are they going to live? I know that from experience with my brother Juan, when my parents were invited to the First Baptist Church of Brandon for their special needs ministry, they went there for a few years, and then the parents went, what are we going to do with our kids when they get older? So they just got together and built New Horizons Group Home. My dad took two years off his work as a builder and, and helped build two of the group homes, including the one where my brother Juan lives now. And, and, and that's really hard to do, and so what y'all are doing is, is, is great. I know this is a long-term vision, this is something that's going to happen tomorrow or next year, but with the help of the private sector, a lot of good people that care in the private sector, and core fundamental government partners, and local government, state government, federal government, and so forth, this is something that I have faith, and I do mean faith, that can happen for people. We have that, we just started something I've wanted to do for a long time, this special needs parent support group, and we had our first live meeting on Saturday, we want to have you to come speak at one of them, at CUP, and we had, over in South Tampa, we had like 65 people in the rain, and what, the, the top thing on their mind was housing for their, for their children, jobs for their kids as well, and, and different issues like that, but group homes and, and things that they can trust. So what you're doing is top of mind for these folks, and so I just wanted to highlight this, because this, this will, it may not be there for their loved ones tomorrow or a year from now, but this will give people encouragement that good people like yourself are working hard and trying, so I just look forward to supporting in every way that I can and, and just being support to you, so thank you.
Thank you, and I would just add that we are excited to hopefully work with all of our local partners, and we just got back from the Florida Housing Coalition Conference, and there's a lot of unique opportunities for cities to be partnering with local nonprofits and development teams in bringing, whether it's infill projects to life, exterior larger developments like this to life, but creative ways to use the land that we have so that we're not continuing to build too far out. We would love this community to have access to the same amenities that we're able to in the city of Tampa. And so, if we can move that needle in the direction and provide a choice for families that doesn't currently exist, I think it could be really, put Tampa on the map for being known for being that support system, and many, many families are impacted by this cause, and many Fortune 500 companies have C-suite executives who have family members that are impacted by autism and disabilities, and so they're thinking, where am I going to be long-term so that my family member has that support long-term?
Councilman Maniscalco?
Thank you very much for this presentation. My stepdaughter, and I should stop saying stepdaughter, I should say daughter, but 13 years old, severely autistic, is always going to need care, and we, we have the conversation, my wife and I, about what happens in the future? Do we put her in a group home? Where does she go? I want her to stay with us, and that's what I want to do, but as she gets older, you know, is she going to have opportunities like this? Where's she going to go? What is she going to do? You know, she's not going to be at home all the time, I want her to have a, a, a life of fulfillment and a happy life, like everybody else. So seeing projects like this, especially here in Tampa, because my wife lived in Port Charlotte, and it was a struggle to get to the services that she needed. She had to drive to Sarasota, Sarasota was the closest place to her. Moving up here, Tampa's completely different, but at the same time, you know, this is part of a long-term plan of, of continuing to expand services for, you know, young people and families, and making sure that Tampa is, is accessible to everybody, you know, because I planned, somebody asked me this morning at a coffee shop, do you plan to be here till you die? And I said, yeah, I, I even- I even have my cemetery plot picked out. And I said, yes, I plan to be here the whole time, born, raised, educated, and dead. And so, I-
Are you talking about here?
Not, not, not in this building. But this is, this is wonderful, you know? And I look forward to sharing this with my wife when I get home at four in the morning tomorrow after tonight's meeting and telling her about, you know, this presentation and what you're doing and what your team and all the people here, because there's, there's hope for the future. You know, there's opportunities for tomorrow. And like Councilman Viera said, you know, it may not happen tomorrow, but we know that down the road, things are happening. And it's going to continue expanding and servicing, servicing and serving families, you know? Because we just want people to live a happy life, like everybody else, and that's it. So, thank you very much. This is very impressive. And whatever I could do to support you, this is very exciting. Thank you very much.
Councilman Carlson, then Councilwoman Hertek.
Yeah, thanks again for your leadership in lots of ways in the community. You probably already have, but if you haven't, please talk to my legislative aide, Dossi. She is connected to the moms groups in South Tampa that have kids that meet this criteria. And so, she's, she's very, very connected to all of them. And just like Councilmember Viera's dad volunteering time, there are people that can volunteer time and money. And, you know, I think this, this, you can get money from big organizations, but there's, there's so much grassroots of families that actually have kids with special needs, and we need to make sure that we, that we rally the community around it. Did you say the price of this? I know it's going to change because it's a vision, but do you have any idea what the price is? And is there a website that people can go to to support it?
Yes. So, the website that they can visit is projectfocusfoundation.org. The cost on it is estimated between $60 and $70 million for the total community. That is subject to change and is based off of the rendering. So, it's, you know, the housing component could change, the floors could change, density could change. Really, the goal is to create that all-encompassing community model where you have housing within walkable services, within walkable retail, within opportunity and purpose.
Councilwoman Hertek.
Thank you. And I echo what others have said. I think this is phenomenal. And for me particularly, I really love the focus on having the education there as a former teacher myself, who really tended to work with students with special needs. Quite a few of the students I worked with were autistic, so it was, but knowing that folks have somewhere to go, but that it's on a campus that protects students, that makes, they don't have to go far for the services. And they, you know, we're seeing that in a lot of different areas, and so, this is kind of just what we need. But my question is, do you have land for this?
We don't have land.
Okay.
The rendering is based off of a surface lot that I pass every day on my way to our current campus. We have reached out vigorously, and we're going to continue to push. It's in the Sulphur Springs area. But we would envision that this community would complement a neighborhood, bringing jobs, bringing, you know, potentially solving a food desert crisis, meeting the community where they need it. And so, I am hopeful that wherever we do end up, there is no displacement for any, lack of the better words. But that surface lot is just south of the dog track, right behind Tampa Family Health Centers.
Yeah. And where is your current location?
We're currently located in Temple Terrace.
Oh, okay.
However, we are, we service the entire community.
Wonderful.
Majority of our students are Hillsborough County, City of Tampa. We do have a few families that travel from outside of the county because that is how far they are willing to go for their, their children.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I really appreciate you bringing this vision to us.
Councilman Miranda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much for giving someone, all of them, a hand up instead of a hand down, pushed down. And that shows you the character of yourself and your team that you have together that wants to help everyone that has this unfortunate thing. But along with that, maybe some developers are listening to this debate this morning, or conversation, I should say, and maybe they could come in and do their part and maybe help build something for a cost or something like that so that everybody can have an upswing in life instead of a push-down. Thank you and your organization.
Thank you, Councilman.
Well, thank you. So, Mr. Clemens, I have a hard time saying that instead of Clayton. I've known you for so long as a friend. But Clayton, I was, had the privilege of being invited up not too long ago to the campus and seeing the services and talking with the staff. I encourage my fellow council persons, if you haven't taken up on that opportunity, it's worthy of going up there. You know, it's interesting, you know, watching this, it's so inspiring in what you're attempting to do. But in some ways, it makes me so angry that in 2025, in a just and relatively wealthy country, that we're still not providing the services for all citizens of, you know, across the socioeconomic and, you know, with people who are challenged and disabilities, that we really should be stepping up and providing these types of programs for folks. I think all, I don't know if there's a family out there that's not touched in some way by someone who has some type of development issue or disability that can be assisted in these types of programs. So, these types of things are, and I really applaud you. I would, I would have never thought that, you know, when we first met, that this would be something that you've so, really been such a great advocate for. And you've taken your amazing talent and seized such an important program to pursue. And hopefully, you'll see this through, and we will have something that is very similar to your initial vision and soon to service all the citizens of Hillsborough County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, point of personal privilege, I know it was mentioned at the end of the last meeting, and not everybody's watching at the end of the meeting, but condolences to the family of Andy Hughes. You had mentioned it, and we're, it had just, we had just been notified, but as a historian, as a member of this community, I just want to offer my condolences to the family. It's, you know, it's all over social media, but he's touched so many institutions, from USF to the Tampa Theater, to the Columbia, to, you know, somebody that embodied and loved Tampa history. I just want to let the family know that we're thanking of them, and that's it. Thank you.
Also, in, in y'all's email this morning, I sent what I proposed I'm going to do for New Business today for just to address what's happening right now with the F dot memo. So, if y'all would take, I would just take a moment sometime today to look through that and so we could have some discussion during New Business. Just wanted to bring it to your attention, if you haven't seen it yet, to have that discussion during New Business. And what was that? Yeah. 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 Thank you guys for coming.
Hi, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. Mr. Shelby.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good morning. Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney, here to talk about the rules of decorum for the public comment for today's meeting. Members of the public are allowed a reasonable opportunity at the beginning of today's meeting to address any item on the agenda before the city takes official action on the item. A three-minute time limit applies to all speakers providing public comment. If you're here to speak on public comment, please fill out a speaker card and place it in the box outside the commission, the council chambers. One card per speaker. Each person submitting a card will be recognized by name by the chair to approach and speak. As I said, a three-minute time limit applies. Names that cannot be read will not be called, so please print legibly. Now, if you're here to speak on an item that is set on the agenda as a public hearing, please don't fill out a card. Instead, sign in on the sign-in sheet at the podium outside. Speakers and members of the public are also reminded that they are to refrain from disruptive behavior, including making vulgar or threatening remarks or making or causing disruptive noises or sounds, or displaying signs or graphics. The chair will rule out of order any person who speaks without being recognized or attempts to address the council from outside the speaker area at the podium. Persons failing to comply with the city council rules may also be ruled out of order and, at the discretion of the chair, may be removed from the chambers for the remainder of today's meeting. Now, if you're here to speak on anything that is on the consent docket, the time to speak now is at general public comment. Same with staff reports. And finally, city council members should refrain from engaging a speaker under public comment. And the public should be aware that the city council does not take questions or have a dialogue during general public comment. This is your opportunity to express your position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelby. We have one public speaker registered online, Michael Randolph. Michael, are you on?
Good morning. My name is Michael Randolph, and today I come representing the Center for Nonprofit and Community Development, an entity that represents nonprofits throughout the nation. Over the last five months, I've been approached by emerging young leaders from Sulphur Springs in East Tampa. They want a powerful, consistent message, a deep, burning desire to become changed agents in their communities. These young voices, un, un, that's about asking permission, they're ready to leave. East Tampa and Sulphur Springs may be among the poorest communities in Tampa. They are the home to some of the brightest, smartest people that I've met. These neighborhoods are rich in potential and especially among the young population. That's why we're providing a transformative training to these young leaders. It isn't an option, often, it's essential. Unlike the nonprofit Leadership Center in Tampa Bay, which uses a bottom-top-bottom approach, our approach builds change agent from the ground up. We are not just talking about leadership, we're talking about cultivating power. A new generation of leaders is raising, from the block to the block. Again, from the block to the block. Over the next 12 weeks, they will engage in hands-on training designed to spark a real world change. This isn't a theory, it's transformation. The curriculum covers housing, grassroots organizing, economic development, artificial intelligence empowerment, and strategic deal-making. The goal isn't just to join the system, it's to build a new one led by community itself. The program doesn't prepare leaders to join a new one led by the community itself. This program doesn't prepare leaders to join a table, it equips them to build a table. And it isn't about change of the existing system, it's about building a new one where the community creates the table, create the agenda, and lead the transformation. Thank you. Sulphur Springs, in East Tampa, the new leaders is coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph. First speaker is Sergret Dos, followed by Jason Marlowe.
I wasn't expecting to be first, but I appreciate the honor. And so, we'll just wing this for what it is. It's interesting that a couple of weeks ago, I was here and we talked about Sergret Dos. You've already said my name.
I know.
And I did make the deadline for that, my appendix for the appeal. It's interesting, I use a unique word, and people are all up in arms, or some are up in arms, even on the internet, I get trolled by people who are a little bit taken aback by me using a particular phrase, which the barrel had on it, and they take it off the barrel, they do something with the cracker barrel, and people lose their minds. So, I was just wondering if I was right or wrong. That being said, I know that these things open up with some sort of prayer or what have you. And what baffles me, particularly in Tampa, about that, I'm not here to judge whatever anybody's religious preference may or may not be, but I'm pretty interested, I'm pretty convinced that if the individual, but if so many people here claim to follow showed up, y'all would lynch that nigga again. And we know what he looks like. And I'm thinking, I said, you know, you know how roguish you have to be to steal Jesus? Change his name, do all these things, and then you push it upon people, and for some reason, not enough people will stand up to the obvious mistruths that have been told for years. I want to also say this, if I offend people, I probably mean to. So, take it personally if it fits. And I'm not just speaking about the racist white people, but I'm talking about even some of you all who know what's going on and say nothing. And whether you're a Sambo or a coon or anything else, I'm speaking to you too, a capitulating individual.
Can, I'm sorry, my, I would ask you, if you could just not use the inflammatory type of racial, I don't think it's a good idea to normalize that type of language.
That's interesting in this country right now.
Well, but at this council and at this government meeting, I don't think it's appropriate to normalize that because, you know, it's hurtful to people. There's people, and especially I see some, I see older people that have fought against these types of words that, you know, that hurt people. So, I appreciate your position on these things, but if you could just choose your words. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not-
You want to be a little more articulate in the face of inarticulence that's been shown to me by this city especially.
Thank you. We're not by this council.
They weren't even articulate when the guy that you all rehired, and give me my minute back, when the guy that you rehired falsely accused me of perjury. You all rehired him. And I know that there's at least, well, there's the second one up here that's in the turn. And, you know, this is not a Halloween costume. This hat doesn't represent a Halloween costume and need to do the identification tags. And if you Google me, what else will come up? You all know that 214 is actually the second thing in the public record about me. So, when a person who wasn't willing to fight, and I have no issue if you did or didn't, wasn't willing to give this country a check up to your life, I think it's kind of insulting to talk about free speech. Because that's what it is, it's a First Amendment right. And I think you might be a little bit wrong about that, but I don't need necessarily make that a legal issue for right now. The reality is, there's a lot of things that go wrong, and you all say nothing about it. And by the way, we do need more Uncle Toms because another misnomer, and less of the other people. That being said, shout out to the University of Thomas Jefferson High School, the greatest institution of learning in this city.
Thank you, sir. And again, I don't want to impede your First Amendment rights, I just wanted to highlight the-
I understand.
Highlight, thank you. And Mr. Marlowe.
Good morning, Tampa City Council.
Next speaker will be Michelle.
Jason Marlowe. I did not feel like being here today, but Tallahassee is four hours away, and FDOT, my legislators, and the governor are not all assembled for me to admonish them, so I am here instead. I want to take this moment to mention that I and stuff in my fridge are actually old enough to remember when Tallahassee pretended to care about local autonomy or home rule. Somehow, the party of small government is somehow big enough to come into our neighborhoods and paint over murals and crosswalks that make it safer for families to go to and from school. The science and statistics are clear. Creative crosswalks reduce collisions. One of the crosswalks that was or will be unceremoniously painted over has likely already saved a life over its history. Pedestrian safety in a region that is one of the nation's deadliest places to traverse should be our priority. Those crosswalk colors don't bite, they make our community better. I want to thank the city council for its efforts to improve this issue, but I am here this morning to encourage this administration and city council to seek all possible legal recourse to combat Tallahassee's unprovoked acts of aggression and to seek creative means to continue investing in making Tampa safer for everyone to get around. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marlowe. Michelle, I'm going to murder your last name, Mastra, Mastra Tataro. There we go. Thank you, Councilman Maniscalco. And the next speaker will be Bobby Creighton.
Good morning, everybody. I hope everyone's doing well.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning. I have a paper I want to get out to everybody. Do I give it to you or not? My name is Michelle Mastra Tataro. I am handing out what I feel we need to address. I am following up on August 11th night meeting that Mr. Miranda was very concerned and he wanted to pass a motion. So, I'm just following up with that. Do you want me to read it? I am following up on our previous discussion regarding the wetlands and protected mangroves in the neighborhood. At the meet, last meeting, Mr. Miranda raised concerns about the uprooting of protected mangroves for the purpose of obtaining incentives and proposed motions to address the issue. I would like to emphasize that approximately 23 acres mixed with wetland and mangroves were removed, which constitutes a violation of the yellow line land restrictions established due to the area's historic value. As you know, properties within the designated district are subject to strict guidelines regarding building height, design, materials, signage, landscaping, and environmental protection. These regulations are placed to preserve the district's character, mitigate flooding, protect surrounding residential communities despite the safe, the development in question preceded in the manner and disregarded multiple requirements. The land was originally an AE flood zone. Now, it's an X flood zone in restricted area. When everybody else is grandfathered in at a certain level, this was built 15 feet from- When everybody else is grandfathered in at a certain level, this was built 15 feet up, blocked all the underground chambers that used to take on our wetlands and the mangroves to flush out back to the bay. It's gone now, and they were allowed to. The approved design showed green space, if you look in the picture, the first picture. It showed a very presented fair apartments. And then if you look page three, it shows what exactly was done, with one retention pond in the back. The first one shows many ponds. This development not only disregards environmental and historic safeguards, but also threatens the integrity of neighboring homes, many of which, like mine, built in 1918, are part of a community historic fabric. I respectfully urge the council to support Mr. Miranda's-
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you. Time's up. Sorry. Bobby Creighton, followed by Tara Bluma.
Well, did I get an answer?
No, I'm sorry. Bobby, followed by Tara.
Good morning, Bobby Creighton. Um, I'm here to speak on item, uh, 66. Um, had the opportunity to clarify one of the issues that I had with that, um, early this morning with, uh, Ms. Scharf, um, regarding the, uh, outside council. Um, so that's been cleared up in my mind. Um, there was a couple of other items, though, within the updated ordinance, um, that I think are a little, uh, unusual. One is that there's reference to an executive order for how lean settlements should be, um, processed. I couldn't find anywhere else in the city code that references a specific executive order for how policy should be enacted. Um, so it just seemed a little bit unusual to have something like that inserted into the code when it should be, in my mind, spelled out as a policy, so that it can be amended by the policymakers, um, and the policy adjusters, which is this body. Um, so my recommendation would be, if that comes up for discussion today, that those policies get spelled out, they are inserted into the code, and that, that executive order, then will have no reason to exist. The other item was there, uh, increased fines for knowing and willful demolition of historic structures. They set that at 20% of the property's value before the structure comes down. I think that should be higher. Once a historic, uh, structure is demolished, it's not coming back. That's the heritage of our city, that's what makes Tampa Tampa, and we need to be preserving those places, um, and set proportionate penalties for people who willingly destroy them. The repeat offender, or the repeat violator, uh, definition, uh, they're updating that to align with state statute. Every single other local government that I've seen, uh, in the biggest cities in the state, and in those counties where those cities are located, use this statute. It's just the common practice, uh, in code. We're finally updating that. The only reason it's different in Tampa is an accident of history, um, so I support that. Uh, I think that about covers the code enforcement stuff. I won't be able to, uh, be here this evening to, uh, speak on, um, the comprehensive plan topic, so I'll go ahead and address that now. I hear a lot at the meetings, at city council during public comment, about the need for , uh, density in East Tampa. Uh, there was a gentleman who came last week and described how he was trying to create a grocery store development, but because there was a lack of, of the clientele, there wasn't the density to support it, we're not able to get the, um, the businesses and the uses that, uh, East Tampa deserves into those neighborhoods. Um, so I would caution, uh, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. There are places in the city where it's sensible not to develop, places that are prone to flooding, where people's lives might be at risk. But there are other parts of the city that need that density in order for them to grow and thrive. So, we hear this phrase, "smart development." It's a careful, uh, tight rope to walk, it's a balancing act, I know, um, but thank you for your, uh, consideration on how to walk that carefully, so that everywhere, uh, can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tara Bluma, followed by Pastor Williams.
Good morning, Tara Bluma. I'm gonna keep on that conversation topic, that one-size-fits-all solutions rarely work. So, let's think about that when we're looking at the comprehensive plan. Um, number 69, I am tired of reimbursement resolutions. Uh, they keep blowing through the money irresponsibly, not necessarily in the amounts that they said they were going to spend on for particular items. Look at how many times in the presentation, they said that they were going to spend money on fire. See how much money they've actually spent on fire, yet the money has been spent and allocated. Um, and with that, I would not approve that in a large list format again. Ask, let them ask for a reimbursement resolution per item that they want, and then limit them to that amount, and not let them raid the piggy bank for other projects they might like more. Number, oh, I am 100% against the Ashley project. Via, whether it's via, uh, CRA money or city money, we can't afford that right now. That is a want, not a need. On number 38, the $100,000 award to NAACP, um, that is not a donation, it's an agreement for services, and they were required to do a performance report of the last $100,000 that they received. I was not able to find that performance report anywhere. So, if it hasn't been presented, I think it's best practice, when you're, uh, making an agreement for services, that you follow up to see if those services were performed. And if it has been presented, let's, um, put that in the agenda and make that readily available. On number 41, I am not aware, wasn't able to find out if that money for, um, Ebor Block by Block is coming out of the CRA, but it seems like it should. So, again, I would like more transparency on the agenda, to see where is that money coming out of. Um, and then finally, on the parks lighting, I had to dig and ask lots of questions about that to find out what was going on there. Um, I think that there was an agreement that within 180 days of the resolution that you approved in 2024, that they would provide the construction cost for all eight of the parks. Um, today, you're only seeing the construction costs for three of them. Let's find out what the other five were, let's get that presented, so we know if they're within budget, or if they've already blown that budget out of the water as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marlowe. Pastor Williams, good morning.
Good morning.
Next speaker will be Ashley Morrow.
My name is Pastor William, located 1112 East Scott Street, used to be, but they took my church and gave it to some white people. But I'm here to speak, uh, not on certain island that you have on the agenda, but I'm here to speak about Berman Heights and, uh, Jacksonville, uh, Jackson Heights. What you, what you're doing here to us, people of color, taking our land and put, putting swank holes in there, which is not right. So what we have to do, we, I can't wait to, uh, Thomas, uh, Scott Thomas get there. He gonna get there, 'cause he told me to vote for him, I'm voting for him, and hoping that he, when he get there, he do what's right for people, and understand that we need people like him. And a young man that just got to speak. We know, you know, we going through a lot of problems. Just, just yet, was it yesterday, when somebody went there and killed some little innocent young, young people in school? It's ridiculous. You got time to do something like that? Why don't you just get time to do something, try to help people? And that's what we need to do, to help one another. That's what the Lord took, told us to do, help one another. But we don't want to help certain people, and special people of color. You got to understand, we all are here because God put us here, and we're happy to be here too, and we're going to continue to give God all the glory. And Uncle Father gonna give me a pat on the back, I don't want no pat on the back. I want you to give God all the glory that he deserves, and that's what life is all about, trying to help one another. Do the right thing, do the right thing. So when, uh, Pastor Thomas Scott get there, which he gonna get there, he gonna have a handful, 'cause what they want, what we wanting to do, fill in those retention ponds, that they done duck, sit, sitting and duck holes in it, and put, put, take our land for, give us our land back. Let us build a house that we want to build on, and not to put a house what they want to. We want to build two-thirds, build two-thirds, three-thirds, build three-thirds, one-third, regardless. We got, want them to do what we want them to do, and do the right thing for everybody. And I guarantee you, God will bless all of you. Thank you for my comment.
Thank you, Pastor, have a beautiful day. Ashley Morrow, followed by James Adair.
Hello, my name is Ashley Morrow, and I'll be sharing Black history. We often think about the door of no return in Ghana as the place where enslaved Africans were forced through Castle Porter, Port- Portal, sorry, onto ships for the Middle Passage, but Tampa too carries its own history, version of that history. When the Negro Fort was built, um, destroyed in 1816, and Andrew Jackson did his trek across the northern part of Florida in 1818. Angola was destroyed that next year in 1819, as well as the Onis Treaty being created. Uh, that switched the territory from a Spanish to a US territory. Then you have the Moultrie Creek Treaty, where the Seminoles, and black Seminoles were moved to the center part of Florida. Fort Brook was created that next year in 1824. Andrew Jackson comes four years later and does his thing. He, uh, enacts the Indian Removal Act in 1830, which wanted, which, uh, ruled that the Seminoles had to, and black Seminoles needed to come through Tampa, go to the port in, uh, Louisiana, New Orleans Pike, Fort Pike, and head up to Oklahoma to the reservation. The year after that, a man by the name of John Winslet comes to Tampa, and he is, uh, warned that he should not, uh, go looking past Tampa because it's dangerous outside of our borders. He was looking for a black, uh, runaway slave from Georgia. A couple of years after that, we have the Dade Massacre, a black man by the name of Louis Fatiel Pacheco leads them through, from Fort Brook up to Fort King, which is the Ocala area. They are massacred of all but three people, that's how we, two or three people, that's how we know about this. That happens in 18, 1835. So, obviously, since that happened, they weren't gonna lead a horde of black Seminoles and Seminoles back through Florida. So a lot of history books that I've looked up, you see this arrow coming from Tampa up to Louisiana. And when I was in school, I remember them talking about the Trail of Tears, so I thought, always thought it was a long walk, but the Seminoles actually came through this place, Fort Brook, and that was not taught to me in school, so I think that was very important. Um, this is a photo that's very familiar, it's from 1837, so there was a lot of activity going on here around that time, because this was an immigration camp. Tampa was an immigration camp. A man by the name of General Jessup, he writes a letter, he says, "The measures of immigration have entirely failed, the new, uh, the Indian Negro have been alarmed by the arrival in camp of individuals who have lost their lives," I'm sorry, "lost their slaves during the war. Most of them have fled." So, um, the Seminoles did not want to leave unless their brothers could come with them, the black Seminoles, so they made that deal with them. And then their names recorded on these documents, these are their names. These are their names. These are their names. There's more, sorry. These are their names. These are black Seminoles, and they were taken to Fort Pike, and some were resold back into slavery. These are their names. These are their names. These are their names. And these are their names. It's two more. All right, thank you.
Thank you, I really enjoyed your presentation.
I'll be back next week.
Thank you very much. James Adair, followed by Carol Ann Bennett. Mr. Internet YouTube star, James Adair. Thank you, Ms. Hurtel.
We've got some pretty exciting stuff going on. Uh, last time we were here, we talked about the, um, how do you find people?
Start with your name.
Oh, sorry, James Adair, the agent who cares, out of South Tampa, South Gandy. Um, we spoke about, uh, what do we do if people are blowing leaves into the drains, things like that. And then I don't know if people actually watch these things, but I got a call from a neighbor, uh, off of Rome, and he's like, hey, this guy is dumping his pool debris into the drain. I guess it's new construction. Anyway, uh, we did work with the city, uh, code enforcement, uh, they did go out, they verified, um, did issue a citation, so that's good news, um, and then followed up and found out that it all actually happened, so that was good. Uh, so that's one, maybe we can market that? Get back to my notes, sorry, I had so many, but you guys have answered them along the way, so this has been very helpful. I have a couple of awesome other ideas for you. You guys? Is that right side up? Is that right? Yeah, you got it right side up for you? Okay, perfect. Uh, stormwater's still a big deal, I know that it's a little bit fatiguing for, uh, probably people who work in that department, especially being six days. Uh, but I thought that the loudest advocates probably need to have the best information, so that, uh, when we take podium time, uh, it's informed, instead of just opinionated and uneducated. So, uh, why not do an intensive, a three-day, kinda like a Leadership Tampa Bay, but all about stormwater. 15 people, maybe one city council member, one person from the press, that dives deep in each of these particular areas. On the agenda, you can see on these subsequent pages, just for the record, I'll just put it up there. Little screenshot. Another one. Okay, cool. Uh, essentially, uh, we've had engineering conversations, uh, how does these things get passed? And basically, the argument goes between the building department and the actual stormwater engineering. We need to have time with each of those to explain things like green space, permeable materials, stuff like that. Uh, when we complain, Michelle's issue particularly, uh, we get excited about it, it's a very large project, but, uh, when you pull up the, uh, development map or the, the survey for it, I can't make heads or tails of what is or isn't a mangrove, for example. We need people who are educated in that to be able to give us the, sort of the play-by-play. Now, I know stormwater has just done a ton of town halls, but sitting through many of those, some of the same questions over and over again from some of the same people. And it's not like we need a whodunit, we just need education. Uh, Stephanie brought up staffing issues, uh, why on the list does it look like this when we say we only have 64? It's probably easily explained, but if we had a time to sit down and have presentations like what's outlined here, we'd be able to dive deep on some of the, the biggest things, and we can really start making differences in areas that actually matter, you know? Uh, I'm really impressed with a lot of public comment, people that are able to dive in. I think that's fantastic. Uh, I think it's important, if we can have something like this, obviously, uh, connected with you on this, and then also, Smooth Josh, uh, I will say this, uh, Hurry Herbie, uh, is so helpful, um, guy's gotten it done. I don't know, item 74, is that actually still happening?
Staff is listening, so if somebody will bite on this.
Yes, if, do we have anybody for item 74 in the audience? I'm gone, bye.
Carol Ann Bennett, followed by Steve, did Steve McLean leave? I think he left. I might as well. Well, now we know how.
No, he's right there.
Is he still here? Oh, there he is, there he is. Carol Ann Bennett, followed by Steve McLean.
Hi, my name is Carol Ann Bennett. The staff, uh, said that the current comp plan, the land use map can accommodate the 74,000 people or 32,000 more units we need by 24, 2045. They said that they're making the changes so that they could direct the growth into the right place. I'm, I'm a gardener. I know that fertilizer is expensive. If I look at a section of my garden and the plants are going gangbusters, I don't put fertilizer there. I don't spread it all over the whole garden, because if I do, that area that's already flourishing, if I spur it even further, it's gonna overgrow, and it's going to actually end up dying. It's going to be unhealthy. So I look for the stagnant areas of my garden, and that's where I put the fertilizer. And that's what we need to do. We need to go into the parts of the city and say, add this here, add this here, add this here. Look at our garden, so that it, the whole garden grows and is lush and beautiful. Um, I think, I sent y'all this example of something in Seminole Heights, which I think is the perfect way to do it. It's a very good example of how you just add, add, add. I want to make the point that when I go into someone, I'm an expert in my neighborhood, I'm a lifelong resident of South Tampa. You wanna know about South Tampa, I'm your gal. When I go into other neighborhoods, I listen, because I am not an expert in those neighborhoods. Um, I don't know what they want and need, so I listen. Uh, I'm not so arrogant as to say, I know what, what you need. Um, when I go to North Tampa, and they say, this lot's been vacant for this many years, this building- this building's been vac- vacant, when Pomota Beach says, please, how do we get reembell- redevelopment? When I go to District Five and they say, we need ADUs, duplexes, triplexes, multi-unit, when people like Bobby Creighton tell you what his neighborhood need, I'll tell you what I'm hearing, but you've gotta talk to them. You've gotta talk to the Bobby's and you've gotta talk to the people who live there because they are the experts, not me. I'm an expert on my neighborhood. And I, they know their streets, their businesses, their intersections, they are legitimate. But I wanna just say, make a quick comment, there are some people who don't have a list of what their neighborhood wants and needs. They only have opinions about everybody else's neighborhoods. They only speak divisively, they call people names and they say those people are evil with evil motives. These people tend to have staggeringly inaccurate information. They're not asking for help with their neighborhoods. I do not consider people like that legitimate. And I hope you listen to the Bobby Creitons and the other people who live in the neighborhoods and know exactly what's going on with this business, this intersection, this group of, of homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Steve McElhenney. Next speaker will be John Green.
Good morning, Council. I'm here to support uh, item number twenty-eight on your agenda. It's been pending for quite a while and I'd like to thank uh, Councilwoman Lynn Hertak and her staff, Stephanie, I'm sorry, Stacey Kelly. Um, this is a letter that I prepared in support of this budget amendment back in twenty-twenty-two and it outlines the uh, the playground and the need. This is, this is the playground we're talking about. It's at the South Himes uh, facility for the Interbay YMCA. Parents usually end up shining their car lights on this uh, this basketball court to allow the neighborhood kids to play. This is not a league, this is pickup basketball games and uh, Councilman Miranda may remember Sharisa Hills, who's now in North Carolina, and I've copied her on an email telling her we finally got to the city council. I wanna show you a couple pictures. This is uh, on Bay Street, uh, the thirty-eight-hundred block of Bay Street where the city just finished cleaning out the ditches there and um, they did a great job. The only thing is, in the thirty-nine-hundred block, and you can see down here is where they cleaned it out, this is the thirty-nine-hundred block where the stormwater inlet is. So, this is where they cleaned, this is where they didn't, and they stopped. Uh, there was a crew of six, uh, six people that got out of a truck, uh, and they, they proceeded to cut the weeds out of the thirty-eight-hundred block and didn't touch the next block. As we're going forward with maintenance of stormwater ditches and canals and it's really important that we focus on the maintenance, um, before we start expending large amounts of money for capital projects. Um, I would certainly suggest, and, and I know there are many others that would say the same thing, uh, shift this money over to maintenance and hit it hard and hit it fast. We're getting ready to enter into the rainy season, potent, potentially hurricane season. Um, and there's a lot of areas that haven't even been touched yet. But I, I will say, they did a great job in the thirty-eight-hundred block, but all the water well goes to the west of the thirty-nine-hundred block. Uh, please consider that in your deliberations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McElhenney. John Green followed by Bishop Michelle B. Patty.
Good morning, John Green. I'm here to speak on item uh, thirty-eight. John Green, I'm here to speak about the issues of the hundred thousand dollars going to or being considered going to the NAACP. Being that it's, it's a county-wide program, I feel that I can speak on it. I'm not here to oppose the grant, but I'm here to see how the city will be transparent, holding this organization to the highest standard of accountability, of accountability by making information available to the public. This is what you already have on your, on your um, proposal, so we just wanna know that. Number, nu- number, number two, number one, all attendance sheets so that names can be verified and locations of the work, plate, of the workshops in advance. Number two, what type of programs was provided and by whom, with dates and days? Can the proposal be assessed from the city council website for the public viewing? Three, can the public see all expenditures on how the hundred thousand dollars were spent and who signed off on the monies to be released? Number four, what salaries was paid and how, for example, stipends, salaries, ten ninety-nines? The publics need to know how the taxpayer monies are being utilized. With the, with the shortage of house, of, of low-income housing, high rent, people having trouble getting funds to rebuild their lives due to hurricanes, the community taxpayers deserve the right to have full access to the information and if requested, the opportunity to sit in on all trainings and workshops regardless of membership or not. Concerning five sixty-eight, I'm quite sure y'all know about the Constitution. Amendment fourteen, subsection four, we all know that it says, you will not pay slaves or insurrectionists for anything. So in terms of five sixty-eight, it's gaslighting, it never had no teeth and it was only for political reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bishop Michelle B. Patty and the next speaker will be Allison Hewitt.
Good morning, Council. My name is Bishop Michelle B. Patty. I'm here to speak on item thirty-eight. I first like to start off by saying I'm not opposed to the NAACP receiving a hundred thousand dollars, but I am concerned that they held the contract for over ten months and it was just signed on the eighth of this month. The eighth of this month and it ends, this fiscal year ends September the thirtieth of twen- uh, twenty-five. So how much work can be done and how much is going to be presented where the public can see what has been taking place to receive that money? I'm asking that things be transparent. It says clearly that they have to outline uh, each training session, its dates, time, and total attendees. A client service allowed which shall include the number of clients, business assistant, workshop, and seminars conducted. So there's a whole list of things that has to be accomplished before this one hundred thousand dollars is given out. Also, there's supposed to be an audit, an audit. So under chapter one nineteen point zero one, the community will be asking for a public request about what was submitted to this city to receive this money, what work was done, because someone could simply take a phone book and just write names down of attendees. We also wanna make sure that the people that ran these uh, workshop, that they had the professional background to run the workshop. So there's a lot of things, but it's very suspect that they would hold that contract for ten months. Ten months. Want that to sink in, ten months? And now on the eighth of August and it's gonna end on September thirtieth? There's something wrong with that. There's something wrong. So is it, they gonna try to bombard y'all with receipts and uh, information and it's not going to be properly vetted? That would be a disservice to the taxpayers of this city. So every piece of paper, every receipt, every name that is submitted should be vetted and make sure that these people was in attendance, make sure the people received the service, and also where's the proper notice that supposedly, according to this contract, given to the public, that they would know that these classes are being taken, uh, that they're being done. At the school board, it tells them that nobody's supposed to be on that property, so where are these classes being held? So there's a lot of things that the city need to take care of before they just write a check for one hundred thousand dollars uh, to give to someone. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop. Candidate Allison Hewitt.
Good morning, Allison Hewitt and yes, candidate for District Five. Um, after consultation um, with Mr. Shelby, um, I have um, five items that I will be talking about, but the, I will reserve three for the public hearing and then one for the workshop. And so the one I will focus on right now is coordination. Um, the city, the CRA pays the city five points two million dollars to manage the CRAs. You have items on your agenda, items thirteen through seventeen that are code enforcement issues. In the East Tampa CRP, Community Redevelopment Plan, it states in there that the priority should be to work with property owners before they are fined, before the, uh, the property is taken. And I just wanna make sure it's documented in the um, addresses that are on here, that are in the East Tampa CRA, that the CRP was followed and make sure those property owners had a opportunity to know that they were in the CRA and have the access to resources to be able to address the issues. So I will um, uh, bring back up here four more times to make sure. And in the packet uh, that um, you have in front of you, I have made sure that I have the documentation and the pictures for the other issues on which I will speak about. Thank you.
Thank you. Fernando Cassab followed by Sylvia Smith. Fernando? Going once, going twice. Sylvia Smith. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sylvia Smith. I'm a third-generation South Tampa resident. I wanna thank Council for having the uh, presentation at four, the five districts, excuse me, by the staff of the Hillsborough County Planning Commission and the City of Tampa. Um, these meetings, I think, were well-attended. I attended the meeting that was at um, Madison Elementary School and I think it was well, close to a hundred and forty people there. So it was well-attended. Um, and I wanna thank the staff that did the presentation and informed those residents of the changes that will be made to the existing comprehensive plan that will affect their neighborhood. And some of these neighborhoods were founded one hundred years ago, others post-World War II, but they are neighborhoods that have rich heritage and it will be at their expense that developers benefit by those changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Charlie Adams. And the next speaker will be, we'll get to her in a second. She's gone to one word like Cher.
Good morning, City Council. Thank you all for this opportunity to speak. Uh, Councilman Bill Carlson, thank you for, my name is Charlie Adams, representative of Sulfur Springs Na- uh, Neighborhood Association, Sulfur Springs Community, period. And uh, thank you, City Councilman Bill Carlson, for coming out to visit it, visit, uh, Councilwoman Hertak.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
I'm sorry, can, can you hear me now? All right, all right. Uh, Councilman Bill Carlson, thank you for coming out uh, to visit Sulfur Springs Community, Councilwoman uh, Hertak for coming out to uh, this, to our master plan hearing and um, um, Manis Kapo, thank, Councilman Manis Kapo for thank you for, we, hopefully we can reschedule soon to come visit. Uh, there's a few pressing items I would like to mention uh, this morning in regards to uh, we, we spoke about it previously before, um, in regards to our Sulfur Springs Pool, we like keep that at the forefront. Also, our boardwalk, uh, that we, we, we spoke about uh, briefly as well as us being a food desert in the Sulfur Springs Community, hopefully that we can out, uh, raise some attention, allocate some resources uh, to our, uh, to the farmers' market and to create jobs, uh, employment opportunities and hopefully that we can keep uh, Sulfur Springs a, a relevant topic uh, with the city and hopefully y'all can, you all can help us, help uh, help us save ourselves, right? And uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Pointer? Just one word now, right? So if I'm gonna sign here and stand?
That's all it takes.
Not gonna have, you just have to ask?
Why, why, why be excessive?
Next speaker will be Robin Lockett.
Ready? Um, good morning, my name's Stephanie Pointer. Oh, I, I'm asking for my budget, for the Budget Committee first. Um, we had a, uh, we had a request in to, um, speak to that.
Why don't we hold that till after public comment and then I'll bring you up as a budget president?
Okay, well, I gave you the paperwork, I'll come back and get it. All right, works for me. Um, so let's talk about my stuff. I gave you guys, um, good morning, Stephanie Pointer, um, citizen of Tampa. Um, there's too much going on right now. This is crazy, all this stuff going on. Um, I passed you a letter from the University Square folks and I noticed that they only sent it to Councilman Carlson, but I think it's very indicative of how important it is to make sure that the neighborhoods are giving feedback on um, the comp plan amendments. Um, I, I, when I was digging through all my stuff, and of course you know me, I, I make a mess out of everything, but I was looking at this and this has gone from this new comp plan amendment, uh, the encouraging missing, missing middle housing. As somebody who owns missing middle housing, it's a great way for, for small folks to provide housing at a reasonable price. I have folks in my, um, in my missing middle that have been there for seven or eight years. They only move to nursing homes or they go and get married. Um, I also wanted to note that in the February twen- that was in the February twenty-twenty-five plan that went to the um, Planning Commission in May. And I also wanna note that originally, the folks at the Planning Commission thought that it was okay not to put that date on there and they've now put a date on there that says that they can do it. Now, I, I, I'm, I'm not against missing middle. I own two missing middle units, I mean, seriously. But I think what happens is that people get all riled up because when we say duplexes or townhouses, this is a single-family home, here's the roof line, okay? For that single-family home. This is the duplex townhouse that they're putting in next door. This house doesn't, I mean, I've been there in the morning, they don't even get sun until like noon time now because this monstrosity is here. So this is part of the problem. And the thing about it is, when you're doing single-family or attached, they no longer apply to the fifty percent rule. They have to do retention on site, so that way they get a nice little retention pond, which ends up getting filled in later. So why would we take, why would anybody want this next door to them? I don't blame anybody for screaming and hollering about it in the comp plan. Um, I, I wanna say that um, I support Bobby's opinions on code enforcement. Um, I agree with Tara Bluma. Um, and where are the parks districts? And I wanna know where that money was spent that, that we've dulled, dished out. And I also wanna say that I one hundred percent support the funds that you, as Council, delegated to the NAACP. The question I have is, why hasn't it gotten to them? That's FY twenty-five's money, why is it still sitting in city count, or the City of Tampa's bank account? I, 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 I can hypothesize on that, but thank you very much.
Stay close, we only have two more speakers, I'll clear it up. Uh, Robin Lockett, followed by, the last speaker will be Connie Burton.
Uh, good morning, Council. Uh, Robin Lockett. I first wanna thank um, Council uh, for approving item number twenty-eight. Anything dealing with the Yellow Jackets and any type of improvement, uh, I applaud. Uh, second thing is, in regards to the comp plan, I have to think this out. So there's a meeting this evening, there are meetings uh, I like, over the last month. I think any decision regarding the co- comp plan should be held off until you fill that seat because you don't have a black voice uh, to speak for the community of East Tampa. Um, you don't have a decision to make in regards to the budget because there's a deadline with that. But the opportunity for whoever gets that seat, uh, I think that they need to have input for that community. That's my thing on that. Uh, and I have to comment on um, the comment about resolution five-six-eight. Five-six-eight, uh, the design of five-six-eight was just a design. The teeth that was supposed to be provided or the teeth that will be provided regarding five-six-eight is coming from the committee. That's for us to do, right? Louis designed it, uh, created a resolution, but it's up for the committee members, the, the black committee members that sit in that, that met, met and still will meet to provide that information, those teeth that the community wants. So that's my thing on that. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lockett. Connie Burton's our last speaker. Connie Burton's our last speaker.
Good morning, Connie Burton. I want to first appreciate the speaker that come up here weekly to give us an overview of history of our existence here in the City of Tampa. I really appreciate that. And item thirteen through seventeen, you know, it's the little things that the community continued to ask for. And so while the city is, you know, talks about the upkeep of those properties, or have they gone into code enforcement, have they been taken away? We don't want to see those properties then come back and given to a huge development. Because we are watching. It is the little things that the residents of East Tampa have asked for that could be developed on those properties that we don't see happening. And so I begin to hear myself as a broken record to say, what about ADUs? What about container homes? What about duplexes? What is something that can be put on those lots that will be very affordable to the community? We're watching that. Item numbers seventy-one, seventy, seventy-one and seventy-two, when I think about companies receiving such large contracts, then I often think about the office of second chance. How is any of those contracts tied to those offices? Or have they even been asked? To look at ways with some of our returning citizens or people with background challenges could be brought into the employment opportunity. Also, item number thirty-eight, it's the reason why the NAACP is the oldest, the boldest, the baddest, the cuss, disgust organization because we have a proven track record. We have a proven track record of doing just what the community need. We have a proven track record of even those that look like us standing up against those type of oppositions. I hope that you would be in full support of moving forward with the contract. The NAACP do not write the contract, the city do. We have a working relationship with the city. And all of these backdoor noises that we constantly hear from individuals that do not, do not come to a NAACP meeting is not even a member of the NAACP. I hope you put on sound earplugs against that foolishness and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. That concludes public comment. Without objection, we had had a previous request from Stephanie Pointer on the Finance Committee to.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco.
And the motion is to hear from our, the Vice Chair of the Citizens Budget Review Committee.
Correct. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Vice Chair Stephanie Pointer. Say your name.
Good morning, Stephanie Pointer.
Ms. Pointer, are you representing yourself, or is it official opinion of?
No, no, I'm officially representing the Citizens Budget Review Committee.
Okay.
As the Vice Chair. The committee would like to request that City Council request transmission and presentation or an update on the progress on the following fee studies. One, land development code study. Two, construction services fee study. Three, mobility fee study. We request this of the, of City Council in order to begin the process to update the fees charged by the city as to no longer supplement the cost of these services by tax dollars paid by the citizens of the city. While many of these fees may not be raised to the actual cost of the city, they can, they can be raised to allow additional funding for things that can help all citizens. Stormwater, roads, road repairs, affordable housing. And just for single-family homes alone, I wanted to show this to you because we do have the mobility study. First of all, it says in there that in twenty twenty-one, the legislation says that we can only increase the impact fee study, the impact fees by fifty percent of the time unless we have an overwhelming majority and we have to have public hearings. So I thought that was kind of interesting. But I just pulled for single-family homes. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to get down and dirty about the rest of it. But just for single-family homes alone, if we only raised to the adjustment for inflation rate, this rate hasn't been raised since like nineteen eighty-nine. If we just raised it to the cost it should be from inflation, we have lost out since twenty twenty-four. And I use that because I know that the first, the first draft of this policy came out in September of twenty twenty-three. We have lost four point one million dollars that we could have had for mobility. That's only for single-family homes. And you see, we've got this beautiful little chart here that has all the other development fees. Why? And, and it's been said in the budget meeting on multiple occasions by higher-level staff that Bob Buckhorn was very, very, oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting, I got off track. See, this is why I wrote a speech, sorry. I won't say anything else.
Yeah, hold on, we have a question. Councilwoman Hertek.
I apologize. So I don't know if, I saw, I think, Mr. Vaskey come in.
Yeah, he's here, he's in the back row.
Is this something that you can update us on very briefly, if at all, about the circumstances of these fee studies? Because we have asked.
Justin Vaskey, Legal Department. You know, I'm not prepared to know exactly where we're at with them. But I think it's eminently reasonable for this committee to request that you guys request.
Yes, yes.
This information.
I just, you know, you're in the room, and so I thought I'd ask. But I appreciate it. So Ms. Pointer, the Citizens Budget Review Committee is looking for this data. Do they have a requested timeline for the data?
No, ma'am. I, it's my understanding that the mobility study is finished. When we asked, when we made the motion initially, we asked for all three studies to be put forward, and staff said that they may not be completed, they may not all be completed, but we could at least find out we're in the process. We have had that six-hundred-page fee assessment for two years now. And not one fee in the city has been raised since then, with the exception of the sidewalk funds, which weren't on that list. So that's, to my knowledge, I don't think that anything else has been raised. And so we have to start moving somewhere of stopping citizens' tax dollars paying and supplementing other people's homes. I mean, I shouldn't have to pay for somebody else's new house.
So it's.
Thank you.
So it sounds like some, someone should be.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll work on this to make a motion. I suppose I could share your mind if I do it now.
Well, you want to, you want to work on it until, like, new business and the draft language?
I don't think we're going to have a break before new business.
Okay, so you're ready, you're ready to do it?
Yeah, I mean, I just.
Anybody object?
No, I agree.
Okay, without objection.
This is from the Citizens Budget Review Committee, and I agree. And I believe, well, I'll find out if others do as well. But we have talked about this in the past. So the committee, actually, yeah, let me hold off on it so I can have Kelly reach out. Yes, there she is. See, she, she knows me better than I know myself.
Okay, I think it's a good idea.
So we'll work on some timing, and I'll come back at the end of, at new business to find out a timeframe for getting these reports. Thank you for bringing this forward. And I do have one other comment that I would like you to bring back to the committee itself. It sounds like, you know, maybe it might be nice from time to time if you do come, or if someone, either Mr. Scaglioni or yourself, because I know he's chair, to come and speak occasionally on, on the updates. Maybe a five-minute update on what you're doing and how we can all help. I know you can talk to each of us individually because you are my, you are my appointee. So appointees can talk individually. But maybe it might be nice to hear overall, from time to time, when you feel like you have something to share with us. I would hate to make it a monthly thing and then waste time. But, but as, as needed, let us know so that you can have this time. I think this was a good idea.
If I may.
Mr. Shelby.
Go ahead.
Sure enough, please.
I would also like to invite all of you to come to the Budget Committee meetings because we get super-in-depth presentations from the departments. I mean, it's, you know, we'll sit there for two or three hours getting what you guys are getting in a consent version in fifteen, twenty minutes. We're getting for two or three hours, and it'll make the hair stand up on the back of your neck to see what we are getting from staff. They really do a great job presenting to us. And I'm sure that we can have a discussion about that at the next meeting, doing a periodic presentation.
Mr. Shelby.
Yeah, and just a reminder to council and to the public, your committee is meeting tomorrow.
Yes, three o'clock.
At three o'clock, which is the time set up because it is the last opportunity for you to meet before the budget presentation next Wednesday.
Yes.
So they're meeting for, they're meeting at three o'clock tomorrow in the Sister Cities Room.
Thank you. Councilman Carlson.
I don't know about the status of these reports, but some reports end up taking years even for us to get back. And had we had draft versions earlier, we could have made decisions to intervene. An example is the mobility study that took like four years. What I would recommend is, in your motion, that you ask for drafts of whatever reports are impartial completion because there may be analysis or conclusions that would be helpful as we're going through the budget process and looking at this.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you so much. Okay, we're going to go to the Consent Agenda, Public Safety, Councilman Vera, items three through twelve. We have a motion from Councilman Vera, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Neighborhood Community Affairs Committee, Councilwoman Hertek.
Yes, and I wanted to address thirteen through sixteen, or seventeen, just to say that there is no land being taken in any of these. These are simply liens placed on properties for people who are not doing the work that they needed to have done. There is no taking of any land, and I wanted to make sure that people understood that. So I move items thirteen through twenty-five.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilman Vera. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Infrastructure Committee, Councilman Maniscalco. We have a motion from Councilwoman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Finance Committee, Councilman Miranda, thirty-five through thirty-nine. We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the ayes have it. Development and Economic Opportunity Committee, Councilman Carlson, forty through forty-seven.
So moved.
We have a motion for Councilman Carlson, a second for Councilman Vera. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. I need a motion to set public hearings. We have a motion for Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it unanimously. Mr. Shelby, you have something to say?
Yes, by my count, with regard to the items on staff reports, without staff, I have items seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two and seventy-three. I believe if that's correct, you can move those.
So moved. Seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three and seventy-five.
Seventy-five?
...at three-six-zero-six West Beta Bay Boulevard. The request was to go from residential ten to residential twenty. And you voted on this on your July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five meeting. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Does council have any questions? Are there no questions? Is there anybody in, from the applicant in the audience to speak to this item? Is there anybody in public that wishes to speak to this item? Did I get a motion to close? A motion to close from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. Councilman Carlson, would you like to read this, please? No, I'm sorry. All those in favor of approving.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. Councilman Carlson.
Move, item number fifty, file number TACPA twenty-five dash zero-one. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. Ordinance admitting the Tampa Conferencing Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property located at three-six-zero-six West Beta Bay Boulevard from residential ten, R-ten to residential twenty, R-twenty, providing for appeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability for any effective date.
Thank you, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. Please record your vote.
Motion carry, with Miranda voting no, and Vera being absent at vote.
Thank you. The rest of the public hearings are quasi-judicial and require anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to these items to be sworn in. If you are here to testify on any of the following hearings, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in by the clerk. Thank you very much. Item number fifty-one, Mr. Thomas.
Good morning, Council, St. Thomas Development Coordination. Agenda item number fifty-one is REZ twenty-five thirty-seven. This item is a request to rezone the property located at forty-nine-eleven East Tenth Avenue. The request is to rezone from residential multifamily sixteen to residential multifamily twenty-four. I'm available if there's any questions.
Council, have any questions? Okay, is there an applicant? Applicant, no. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak to this item? We have somebody online. Okay, we have, anything, applicants, representative?
Yes, I'm here.
There you go, okay, very good.
Good morning.
Was there anything you'd like to add?
No, I'm not. I'm just here to see if there was any questions.
Okay, very good. Does council have any questions for the applicant? Okay, and once again, is there anybody from the audience that wishes to speak to this item?
Need to close?
Yeah, we did. We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda. A second from? Councilman Maniscalco, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, it's closed. Councilwoman Hertek, would you like to read item fifty-one?
Sure. Item number fifty-one, file number REZ twenty-five dash thirty-seven. An ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of forty-nine-eleven East Tenth Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section One from zoning district classifications RM sixteen residential multifamily to RM twenty-four residential multifamily, providing an effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carry unanimously, with Vera being absent at vote.
Thank you. Okay, we are going on to fifty-two, staff.
St. Thomas Development Coordination. Agenda item number fifty-two is REZ twenty-five forty-three. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at forty-nine oh-four West Paul Avenue and Folio number thirteen nineteen fourteen point zero 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 zero. The request is to rezone from commercial intensive to planned development for residential single-family attached. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. The revisions completed included the council-directed revisions of updating the schematic elevations to match the colorized renderings submitted during the public hearing, including the colorized renderings in the site plan package and adding a note to the site plan to make the schematic elevations binding. I'm available if there are any questions.
Does council have any questions? Applicant?
I'm here to answer any questions. Steve McElhenney, representing the petitioner, be happy to answer anything you might ask me about this. Respectfully request your approval.
Thank you for making those modifications as requested by council. Okay, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this item? Is there a motion to close?
So moved.
A motion to close from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Councilman Maniscalco.
Thank you. I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. Ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of forty-nine oh-four West Paul Avenue and Folio one-three-one-nine-one-four-zero-zero-zero-zero in the City of Tampa, Florida. And more particularly described in Section One from zoning district classification CI, commercial intensive to PD plan development. one from zoning district classification CI, commercial intensive to PD plan development, residential single family attached, providing an effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilwoman Maniscalco. We have a second from Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Viera being absent at vote.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Item number 53.
Sam Thomas Development Coordination. Agenda item number 53 is REZ 2546. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at 1901 West Platt Street, 211 and 213 South Fremont Avenue. The request is to rezone from commercial general to and residential multifamily 16 to planned development for residential single family attached. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. The revisions completed include the council-directed revisions of removing the nine-by-18 in the site data table for the parking, updating the setbacks to ensure the fourth floor is stepped back, and adding a note to the site plan to make the schematic elevations binding. I'm available if there's any questions.
Does Council have any questions? Is there an applicant? Okay, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? Item 53.
Move to close.
A motion to close from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. File number 53, REZ 25-46. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of 1901 West Platt Street and 211 and 213 South Fremont Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification CG, commercial general, and RM16 residential multifamily to PD plan development, residential single family attached, providing an effective date.
Please record your vote. We have a motion from Councilwoman, I'm sorry, we have a motion from Councilman Miranda. A second from?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Hertek. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Viera being absent at vote.
Thank you. Item 54.
Sam Thomas Development Coordination. Agenda item number 54 is REZ 2552. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at 2801 North Tampa Street. The request is to rezone from commercial neighborhood to planned development for residential single family semi-detached and detached. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available if there's any questions.
Council have questions? Applicant?
Steve McElhenney, representing the petitioner, be happy to answer any questions. Respectfully requesting your approval.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this item?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Councilman Carlson.
Move item 54, file number REZ 25-52. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. Ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 2801 or Tampa Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification CN, commercial neighborhood to PD plan development, residential single family attached and semi-detached, providing effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Viera being absent at vote.
Item number 55.
Sam Thomas Development Coordination. Agenda item number 55 is REZ 2555. The item is a rezoning request for the property located at 2318 West North B Street. The request is to rezone from residential multifamily 16 to planned development for residential single family semi-detached. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available if there's any questions.
Any questions? Applicant?
Steve McElhenney, representing the petitioner, respectfully requesting your approval. And I should note that the resolution regarding the bonus.
Got it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, does Council have any questions? No. Okay, is anybody from the public that wishes to speak to item 55?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilwoman Maniscalco. We have a second from Councilman Miranda. Councilwoman Hertek, would you read the? I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. It was closed. Councilman, would you read the resolution? And then after that, if it passed, we'll do the, I'm sorry.
I'll read the ordinance and then I'll do the resolution.
Thank you.
Yes. Number 55, file number REZ 25-55. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 2318 West North B Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification RM16 residential multifamily to PD plan development, residential single family semi-detached, providing an effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek. We have a second from Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Viera being absent at vote.
Councilwoman Hertek.
And now I move the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it unanimously. Thank you. Item number 56.
Hi, good morning, City Council. Leo DeBarteleben, Development Coordination. Can you see me?
Yes, we got you.
Okay, I've been sworn. Item number 56 is AB 22504 for the property located at 1301 West Cass Street. The request is for alcoholic beverage sales, bar lounge, classification for beer in line, consumption on premises, and package sales off premises consumption. Site plan modifications were required to be made between first and second readings. Those changes have been made. The plans have been certified, and a copy has been provided to the clerk. And I'm available for any questions.
Staff, does Council have any questions? Applicant?
Liam O'Dowd out here, applicant. I'm just here to answer any questions if there are. Thank you. And I'm requesting approval. Thank you.
Is anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item 56?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilwoman Maniscalco, a second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. And who will move that up? Councilwoman Maniscalco.
I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. Ordinance approving a special use permit, SU2 for alcoholic beverages, bar lounge consumption, on premises and package sales, off premises consumption, and making lawful the sale of beer and wine adder from that certain lot, plot, or tract of land located at 1301 West Cass Street, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in section two, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, providing an effective date.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilwoman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Viera being absent at vote.
Okay, we have a substitute resolution for item 57. Staff?
Yeah, good morning, staff. City Councilman Chairman, this is Leo DeBarteleben again, Development Coordination. Item 57 is AB 22511. Staff is actually gonna respectfully request that this, that the second reading of this item be continued to the next regular city council session, which would be September 4th, 2025. An issue with the site plan was recently identified and requires correction prior to further consideration. The applicant was originally planning to participate remotely. However, I have communicated this request with the applicant, and he is in agreement with the continuance.
I'm.
Councilwoman Hertek.
I move that we continue file number AB 2-25-11 to the September 4th, 2025 meeting at 10:30, 10:00 a.m. at Old City Hall. 3:15 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida. 33602, third floor.
We have a motion to continue from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to our 10:30 a.m. petitions to vacate public hearings on legislative matters. Item number 58.
Justin Vaskey, Legal Department. I'm here for items 58, 59, and 60. And as a reminder, the resolutions that are pursuant to these items must be approved during the hearing.
Okay.
So, but first of all, item number 58, we are here requesting the approval of a resolution to adopt the non-ad valorem assessment role for a non-ad valorem assessment within the downtown and Ebor city areas of the city of Tampa for the purpose of paying a portion of the operating costs of the Tampa-Ebor historic electric streetcar project during fiscal year 2026. There has been no increase in the rate or expansion of the district, so it's, it's the same as it has been. And the city, the city has received written objections, and those have been filed with the city clerk. Michael English is here to answer any questions, and that is all.
Thank you. Does Council have any questions on item 58?
So we have to open the hearing and approve the resolution?
Okay, we had already previously opened the hearings, so.
For the purposes of the record, we've all, excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
For Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney, for the purposes of the record, we have already opened it. Would you like to us open them individually and then close them separately for the purposes of these assessments?
For each item?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Motion to open?
Second.
Number 58.
Okay, so we have a motion to open the public hearing for item 58 from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it unanimously. Okay, so item 58.
And we have Michael English here.
Okay. Do you have anything to add?
I might as well spend the morning here, I might as well say hello, Michael English and the chair of the streetcar board. It's always a pleasure to see you all, and we would appreciate your continued support for the special assessment.
Thank you.
Haven't you been a member since the beginning?
I beg your pardon?
A member of the district for the streetcar and all that.
I've been, I've been a member and the chairman since we opened this, since the year before we opened the streetcar in 2002.
I just wanna thank you for your services.
I'm not sure which lights I saw first, but I see Councilman Maniscalco.
How time flies.
Okay, Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, just, thank you for your service and leadership on this. Mr. Vaskey, you said, thank you for saying that it's not an increase, but could you, on each of these, maybe just express, not only that there's not an increase, but also maybe how long they've been around and that they're not new? You know, based on some, every year we get emails from people thinking that it's a new tax or a new fee, and could you just?
Are you asking me that question?
No, Mr. Vaskey.
He's asking me, so.
Just so the public knows, because some people think that these are newer, that they're increases, and just wanna save that for the record, if you don't mind, for each of these.
All right.
Go ahead, please.
So is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item 58? We have somebody coming up, so. Scooch aside, scooch aside.
Are you done?
Yeah, you guys can sit down now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Kirill Kassianov, and I'm a property owner, owner in downtown Tampa. I'm here to object this proposed non-ad valorem. One of the things that I've noticed is that there are proven revenue models for streetcars all across the United States. For example, San Francisco takes in $30 million annually, and that's a $3 fare for their historic streetcar. New Orleans, 10 million annually, 125 per ride. Portland, 1 million in fares revenue, 250 for two and a half hours. So what I'd like to request the council to look at are alternative solutions to this versus taxing people in downtown and Ebor. I think there is an opportunity to implement a reasonable fare structure, and then you can actually keep it free for Florida residents as we have a lot of tourists that come into town. Another option would be to create a different pricing model, or just seek alternative grants or public service offerings. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vaskey, you provide clarification of which properties are actually covered by this?
It's in the downtown and Ebor historic district.
And the types of properties that are covered by the non-ad valorem?
Yeah, it would be, it would be.
Maybe Morris might have more information on that.
The assessment applies to commercial property. At this point in time, homestead or residential property is not subject to the assessment.
Yeah, that was the clarification. I don't know if you're aware that Morris Massey, would you state your name?
Sorry? Morris Massey, Legal Department.
And for the purpose of public comment, I don't know if you're aware that non-ad valorem does not affect residential property, only commercial property, just FYI. So residential property is not covered under this particular item, just for clarification, just so you know.
That's correct.
Yeah, so. Okay, so that completes the staff's presentation.
Yes.
Anybody else from the public wishes to speak to this item?
Sorry, I'd like to get clarification on that.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
So you're saying that this?
Yeah, you have to say your name again. Everything.
Oh, sorry. It's, my name's Kirill Kassianov, a property owner in downtown. So you're saying this assessment and tax essentially doesn't affect residential property owners?
Correct. Under the current form and under the current operation of the streetcar, when this was first created, it only applied to commercial properties. And that's what, this is just a continuation of what's been happening for, since the beginning of the streetcar. And it does, it does not apply to residential properties.
Even rental properties? I mean, I received a notice which says that we will be receiving an extra tax related to this.
Let me, let me give clarification on that. I'm not sure.
If it's not homestead, it may apply to that because it's being used for kind of a commercial purpose, I believe that's the interpretation.
So that's the way it works, okay.
Okay, well, that's interesting, right? Because I rent out a condo downtown, this condo that's being affected, and it's a long-term rental, so it's not even like a short-term Airbnb. So that's why I think it's really unfair for folks in my situation to have to pay for this if it's being stated that it's a commercial, you know, tax, right?
Got it. Okay, thank you. Just wanna make sure we had all the right information out there.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, can, so we're not gonna close this because we're gonna, we need someone to read the resolution, which I believe we left off.
Can I, can I also just add? Mr. Vaskey or Mr. Morris, could one of you just say approximately when, how long this, how long this fee has been around?
It's been around since 2000.
Okay.
The year 2000.
So 20, it's, this, that we're in the, we're gonna be in the 2060 year of it, or 2050 year of it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Councilman Carlson. Move the resolution. Yeah, okay. We have a motion from Councilman Carlson to move the resolution, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Motion to close this public hearing. We have a motion to close the public hearing. Now we need a motion to reopen public hearings. I'm sorry. But we have a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, we have, we need a motion to reopen the public hearings for 59. We have a motion to reopen public hearings from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilman Carlson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Justin Vaskey, Legal Department, item number 59 on the agenda. We are requesting the approval of a resolution to adopt the non-ad valorem assessment role for non-ad valorem assessment within the West Shore Business District of the city of Tampa for the first purpose of paying for the provision of certain enhanced services and improvements in the said area during the 2026 fiscal year, including transportation improvements, marketing, security services for said area. There have been no increases in the assessment amount or expansion of the district. I believe this district was created in 2003, and there's been no changes, obviously, on this role. There were no written objections submitted, and Michael Marino is here to answer any questions on this item. He is the executive director of the West Shore Alliance.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, council. Michael Marino, executive director, West Shore Alliance. As, as mentioned by Justin, there's no change overall, but there's additions to the work plan. We're adding more public art into the West Shore District. We're adding more public art into the West Shore District, we're also working on re-landscaping, especially West Shore Boulevard, so that may come to you at some point, because the medians on West Shore Boulevard are owned by the city, the rest of the road is owned by the county. So when the county finishes their work on West Shore Boulevard within probably next six to nine months, that's when we'll work with the city parks on making sure that landscaping on West Shore Boulevard meets the standard that we want to see going forward in West Shore. So that may come to you as a tri-party agreement, but nonetheless, we really appreciate your support, and I continue to work, looking forward to working with you to transform West Shore District. Thank you.
Council, have any questions? Mr. Shelby.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vaske, unlike number 58, number 59 and number 60 have two resolutions associated with each. One is the, for the assessment role, the non-ad valorem assessment role, and the other is this special assessment services agreement.
Yeah, that's correct.
So would they vote separately on each resolution?
Yes, please.
Okay, very good. Any, council, have any further questions? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to item 59?
Good morning, Stephanie Poyner. I'm all for this West Shore special assessment, and I think they should be treated differently than the rest of the CHHA, because they have a different mode of how they do business and what their, their building patterns are and the businesses that are there. So they should be treated differently in the comprehensive plan, which is what this gentleman has asked for previously. I'm okay with that, because you know what? They can evacuate from all the way around them, unlike where I live. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to this item?
Move to close.
We don't, actually, we're not going to close, we're going to move the resolution. So I need a motion to move the first resolution, please.
Move the non-ad valorem assessment resolution.
We have a motion to move the non-ad valorem assessment, a motion for Councilwoman Herman-Hertek, a second for Councilwoman Miranda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it unanimously, I need a motion to move the.
Second.
Special Assessment Services Agreement.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the, move the special assessment service agreement from Councilwoman Maniscalco, a second from Councilwoman Herman-Hertek, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it unanimously. We have a motion to close that public hearing, need a second.
Second.
A second from Councilwoman Herman-Hertek, a second from Councilwoman Miranda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I need a motion to, ayes have it unanimously. I need a motion to reopen public hearings for item 60 from Councilwoman Herman-Hertek, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, the hearing is open. Yes, sir.
Justin Vaske, Legal Department, I'm here for item number 60 on the agenda. We are requesting the approval of a resolution to adopt the non-ad valorem assessment role for the non-ad valorem assessment within the downtown special service district of the City of Tampa for the purpose of paying for the provision of certain enhanced services in said area during the 2026 fiscal year, including but not limited to marketing, business development, safety, maintenance, transportation and planning, beautification and urban design. We are also seeking approval of a downtown special services agreement between the City of Tampa and the Downtown Partnership regarding the use of the non-ad valorem assessment within the downtown special services district. This district was established in 1997, there has been no expansion this year, and there's no increase in the assessment amount this year. Kenyatta Bridges, the CEO and President of Downtown Partnership, is here to answer any questions, and we have received objections to the imposition of the special assessment, and the clerk has those objections on file. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, have any questions? From Ms. Bridges? Ms. Bridges, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, I would, thank you, council. I would like to thank this council. I'm Kenyatta Harrison Bridges, President and CEO of the Tampa Downtown Partnership, and I would like to thank this council for your confidence in the partnership to manage the special services district for nearly 30 years. Over the last fiscal year, our Clean and Safe team has collected over 350 tons of litter and debris in the public right-of-ways. We've also corrected 800 acts of graffiti and assisted with 156 stranded motorists. In addition, through our unhoused liaison services, we have made contact with over 634 of our unhoused residents in downtown to connect them with resources, and that has led to eight instances of housing placements for our unhoused program. In addition to our Clean and Safe program, the partnership, well, beyond the Clean and Safe program, the partnership continues to celebrate the arts and lift up artists and our local artists, and we have now installed six murals across downtown, which we're really proud of, as it's further energizing and beautifying our downtown area. Additionally, we're currently leading a planning study for 300 acres in the north downtown area, to look at that area, to see if there's opportunities to increase density in housing, density in workforce, as well as activate more retail. So I would just like to thank you again for your confidence in the partnership, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, very good, I need a motion to, oh, we got somebody's going, okay.
Good morning again, Kirill Kassianov. I'd like to ask more questions and have the council review the language of the assessment. Specifically, there's vague terminology listed in here, such as including but not limited to. I think the public needs more accessible information on specific fund allocation between the city and the Tampa Downtown Partnership, as well as the measurable outcomes, and then the key metrics of like what good looks like, right? For example, they provide metrics on dash, but what are the actual goals of ridership that we're looking to hit? And is it really necessary when we have other transportation methods within the City of Tampa? Additionally, I think there might be some duplication of efforts between safety and the Tampa Downtown Partnership that are already covered by the city, so I'd just like to get a little bit more information on like, are we duplicating efforts? Is there room to consolidate, right? So that these assessments don't keep, even if they're staying the same, can they decrease? The last comment I'd like to make on this is that, you know, while I appreciate a lot of the efforts to keep the city beautiful, the term beautification itself is pretty vague, and I'd like to understand like what the Tampa Downtown Partnership is doing to drive more economic development into the city, because I don't believe we've actually attracted a lot of the major employers across the United States to come into the City of Tampa. So I would just like more information on that, and I'd like the council to take a look at it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to move the first resolution, please.
Motion to move the resolution adopting the non-ad valorem assessment.
Role, yeah.
Role for a non-ad valorem assessment.
We have a motion. We have a motion for Councilwoman Herman-Hertek, a second for Councilman Maniscalco, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it unanimously, I need a motion to approve the downtown special assessment service agreement.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Herman-Hertek, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. So the gentleman.
Motion to close.
I was going to just address him, you know, there's all, there's a lot of like public meetings on these items, and I will tell you that all the issues that you brought up are issues that Ms. Bridges and I have addressed and discussed, and I know that on the, on the, a lot of those issues that are currently being discussed, but I would definitely encourage you to attend some of the public meetings that we have in the downtown, within the downtown partnership, in these meetings, the public meetings we hold, because a lot of those things you just talked about are addressed.
Can I just add to it?
Yeah.
Also, while Kenyatta's here, you might want to get tray cards, just because, you know, people who are, who are involved in downtown ideally would be involved in the Tampa Bay Partnership as well, but after having conversations, if you have ideas, contact us. But the Downtown Partnership has a lot of data on what they do, which they've, they've shared with us, and if there's a way we can make it more transparent, and I'd be happy to support that as well, but it'd be good to get everybody who's involved in downtown involved in making it better. Thank you.
Okay, so we had closed.
Motion to close.
We have, we need a motion to clo, I was just getting to that point. We said we need a motion to close this particular public hearing, because then we're going to move back into the 10:30 public hearing. So a motion to close from Councilwoman Herman-Hertek, a second from Councilman Miranda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I need a motion to, unanimous, thank you, passed unanimously, now a motion to reopen the 10:30 public hearings, please. We have a motion from Councilwoman Herman-Hertek, a second from Councilman Vera, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, thank you, item 61.
Morris Massey, Legal Department, this is the first of three public hearings this morning on amendment and restatements to community redevelopment plans. This first one is for the Central Park Community Redevelopment Area. I believe you all have heard this in your capacities, the CRA board. It's also been heard by the CAC for the Central Park CRA area and by the Plan Commission. Cedric McCray, Courtney Orr, and some others from CRA staff are here, if you have any questions.
Councilwoman Herman-Hertek.
I have a question for Mr. Massey first. There has been, we've heard comments from the public that there's concern about this being attached to the comp plan, and from my understanding, the comp plan, the language about the comp plan is just, is, meaning whatever comp plan is in place. Am I correct in that?
Correct. State law mandates that whenever you amend your community redevelopment plan, it has to be reviewed by the Plan Commission to ensure that it's consistent with the existing comp plan that's in place. It's not changing the comp plan at all, but it, like any, like your rezoning petitions, they have to review it to see if it's consistent with the existing comp plan.
Yes.
That's, that's the purpose of that.
And we are still quite a ways away from approval of a new comp plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cedric, would you like to say anything?
Good morning, Cedric McCray, Tampa CRA Director. Just wanted to support what Attorney Massey has said, and we are here to request approval of item 61, 62, and 63 related to the community redevelopment plan updates for Central Park, Tampa Heights Riverfront, and downtown CRAs.
Okay, now can we move these together, or do they have to be individual?
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
They're scheduled for separate public hearings, I would hear them sequentially and have separate votes on each, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, very good. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item 61, reference the Central Park Community Redevelopment Area?
Allison Hewitt, business resident of East Tampa, also candidate for District 5, so usually I'll be up here for the East Tampa CRP, and a significant amount of my comments will be because of the East Tampa CRP. This community redevelopment plan is how the CRA is supposed to be developed, and so if we are not following the plan, or at least in this update, that you have a actual report on how the plan was followed, if it was followed, if it was done correctly, if it was successful, then how do we know that this new update is going in the right direction? I am just asking that we make sure, because we have limited time, and we need to make sure that we're successful, that we require a summary of how the plan was followed and accomplishments. We include going forward a implementation of tracking to make sure that we're following the plan and that tax dollars and TIF dollars are spent according to the CRP, because you get projects that says it is addressed and included in the CRP. But is that project, will it seed other developments to grow? Example, in East Tampa, you just recently approved $3.5 million for mixed use, and then a $5 million for the J.C. Newman. Now what does that impact for the plan that will seed additional development? We need to make sure that we are deliberate and thoughtful as we are approving these projects. The stakeholder and engagement of the plan, so it was significant when these plans were created. These updates, to be able to have the community actually engage and speak to, again, what has been done for the last 20 or so odd years, was it successful? Should we continue that? And to be able to justify what these new changes are, if it's going in a new direction? Because there is not even a explanation to you as a CRA board on what the actual changes are and updates to this plan. You just have a plan, and they all look really good, but after 20 years or so, you should have at least a roadmap of where you've been, to make sure you know where you're going. So I'm asking that, as we are moving forward with other community redevelopment plans that will come before you, especially in the ones who are primary, single for families and residential, like East Tampa, a significant portion for West Tampa, that we're being thoughtful and deliberate to make sure that these plans are being implemented according to what it was originally done, and how does that impact where these new plans are going? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak to item 61? Mr. Massey, would you like to add something?
Morris Massey, Legal Department, I just want to address a couple of things that Ms. Hewitt brought up. All of the plans, updates that you have before you do have a description, a very detailed description about where, what the status of the redevelopment efforts are in those various areas. A lot of the reason why these plans are being updated is because of the age of these plans, they're over 20 years old, in the case of downtown, it's over 40 years old. And the, also the goals and policies of the CRA board have adjusted over time, where you all are much more concerned about affordable housing, so all these plans are being updated to address that in more concrete terms. And of course, as you all are aware, anytime a project or a funding proposal comes before you all, part of what staff has to do and what you all have to consider as the CRA board is whether it's consistent with and for others, the individual plans, so.
Thank you very much. Councilman Carlson, did you have a question?
Yeah, I want to ask Mr. McCray. So first of all, to what Mr. Massey was saying, you know, we as a CRA board several years ago asked for these, and then I think we asked them again at some point. So it is, the reason these plans are updated, the community wanted it, we as CRA board wanted it, and then the staff went through the process. My only question, for the sake of the community, for each of these, can you, can you just tell us what the CAC vote was? Do you, do you remember or approximate? Was it unanimous, or 60%? You know, what was, what was the support on the CAC about it, and whether, were there any concerns?
Yes, there was extensive engagement via online surveys. The consultants for each of those respective CRAs have attended engagement meetings, visioning sessions, and, you know, and I believe met with you all individually as board members for the specific purpose of building out those community redevelopment plans. And it is my understanding that the vote was in an affirmative for all of the CACs. Ms. Orr may be able to speak to some of it, but some of those meetings predate both of us being in our current roles. So this process has been ongoing for about two and a half to three years to update these plans.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to make sure, you know, for, for anybody who has concerns with the community, that, that we listen to the CAC, that the CAC did affirmatively approve these, and if it, if it was closed, it would be good to know, but if it was majority or unanimous, could, do you know, do you happen, were you at those meetings? Do you happen to know?
Courtney Orr, CRA Development Manager, and I'd just like to preface that the CAC and the community worked with the consultant to build the update, update. So it wasn't the consultant working in a silo, not taking in the considerations of the CAC. So they supported the development and then the outcome, because they participated hand in hand.
And do you remember what the votes were?
I can't recall a particular vote, but like I said, they, we, we moved it forward with their support, their input, and.
But in each of the cases, do you all recall if the CACs voted for them?
Oh, yes, yes, for sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure for the record, so anybody who's watching has concerns would know that the, the representatives of the community voted in favor of it, and if there are lingering concerns, folks can come talk to us, and we can maybe modify them along the way. Thank you.
Councilwoman Herman-Hertek.
I'm just going to ask, if there's a way that we can encourage people who are in the antechamber to not have conversations there and to continue to have conversations in the hall?
Thank you, sir.
Be greatly appreciated. It's hard to hear at all. But that, I was going to ask the exact same questions that, I want to say board member, because we had the CRA in front of us, but Councilmember Carlson did, this is, this is simply the, we've already approved these, sitting as the CRA board, correct?
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that we had said that, too.
So while your mic's on, can you motion, can you give me a motion to close?
Motion to close, file number 60, or item number 61.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Herman-Hertek, a second from Councilwoman Miranda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I need a motion to move the resolution. We have a motion from Councilwoman Maniscalco to move the resolution, a second from Councilwoman Miranda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, item 62.
Morris Massey, Legal Department, again, this is a resolution to approve the amended and revised and restated community redevelopment plan for the Tampa Heights Riverfront Community Redevelopment Area. It was heard and approved by the CAC. It is, was reviewed for consistency purposes by the Plan Commission and approved by them as well, and then has been approved by you all as, sitting as the CRA board. This is the final act for the approval of it. These plans must be adopted in your role at City Council, if you have any questions.
Does council have any questions? Okay, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this item? Are you none, do I have a motion to close? We have a motion to close to Councilman Miranda, a second for Councilman Maniscalco, all those in favor say aye. No, not this one. We have a motion to close, a second for Councilman Maniscalco, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it unanimously. We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco to move the resolution, a second from Councilwoman Herman-Hertek, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, item 63.
Again, Morris Massey, Legal Department, this is the community redevelopment plan amended and restated for the downtown area. This is probably the oldest community redevelopment plan, the last time it was amended in any comprehensive fashion was 1988. So, and again, this has been reviewed and approved by the CAC for downtown, it's been reviewed for consistency purposes by the Plan Commission, approved by you all, sitting as the CRA board, and this is the final step in the process.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to item 63? Is there a motion to close? We have a motion to close to Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Move the resolution for 63.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Herman-Hertek to move the resolution for 63, I need a second from.
Sir.
Second from Councilwoman Maniscalco, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Item 64.
Ross Sammons, available coordination, presenting file number VAC 24-13. This is an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, and this is an amending ordinance to amend a previously approved vacating ordinance. And the previous ordinance had a special condition from the Water Department for the timing of construction, and that is what's being presented today, to amend that and And that is what's being presented today, to amend that and to extend that condition. I do have the previous presentation available, but I won't present it unless council needs that. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Does council have any questions? Is there an applicant?
Good morning, Council, Tyler Hudson, four hundred North Ashley Drive. Just to put a little bit of context on what Ross mentioned, this council vacated right of way in East Ebor last year in service of a new waste management modern recycling facility. We had a one-year deadline to design, permit, and relocate a water main facility for the city at our own expense. In hindsight, that may be a touch optimistic. So we're here asking for an eighteen-month extension. It's not like we haven't started. We've worked closely with the Water Department. They don't object to the extension. We're thirty percent in construction drawings. We're working together. This is only anyone's fault, just complicated things take time. So would ask for your support, not aware of any objections. And we've got experts here to discuss if you have them. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Vera. Councilwoman Vera, I don't know if you've read anything yet, have you? So let's let you go. All those in favor closing, say aye. Opposed, I'm just going to start skipping past that completely. We are closed. Councilman Vera.
Yes, sir, my pleasure. I move an ordinance presented for first reading consideration. Ordinance says City of Tampa amending ordinance number two zero two four dash nine five passed and ordained on September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, which vacated, closed, discontinued, abandoned. That portion of Fourth Avenue right of way is more particularly described below to extend the one-year requirement to satisfy the water service special conditions by eighteen months, repealing conflicts, providing for separability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Vera, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. Miranda, I'm sorry, a second from Councilwoman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it unanimously.
Motion carried unanimously with second reading and adoption being held on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five at ten o'clock a.m. In City Council Chambers, three one five, East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three three six zero two.
Thank you. Item sixty-five.
Ross Sammons, available coordination, presenting file number VAC twenty-five dash sixteen. This is a city-initiated vacating request. The property address is four nine zero two, East White Way Drive. Proposed vacancy request is to vacate a portion of Alcoa Avenue lying north of White Way Drive, south of Liberty Street, east of Forty-Eighth Street, and west of Fiftieth Street. This application was filed in City of Tampa, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Right of way is currently unapproved. The right of way was created by subdivision Platt. The existing right of way is approximately twelve thousand five hundred square feet. The reason for this request is for the proposed location of Fire Station Twenty-four. Here's an aerial view of the location, the proposed vacating request in yellow. City of Tampa property on both sides in red. And then Greco Park to the north. Here's a clip of the survey provided. Again, the area in red here is proposed vacating request. Again, parcels, City of Tampa property here and here. You'll notice there are still available right of way to the north, Liberty Street, still platted and still available. This was where the right of way was dedicated for Platt. And again, red is the proposed vacating request. This is an image looking north from East White Way Drive, approximate location of the right of way. You notice the stormwater ditch here. Staff has no objections to this vacating request. Easement reservation is required by stormwater. Special conditions, natural resources comply with chapter twenty-seven as regard to tree preservation and site design for any improvements placed adjacent trees in a vacated area. That concludes my presentation. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to item sixty-five? Is there a motion to close?
Second.
A motion to close from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Vera. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, we're closed. Councilwoman Hertek.
Number fifty-sixty-five, file number VAC twenty-five dash sixteen. An ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning a portion of Alku, wow, Alcolu Avenue. It is located north of White Way Drive, south of Liberty Street, east of Forty-Eighth Street, and west of Fiftieth Street within the revised plat of Terrace Park, Unit Five subdivision in the City of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, as more particularly described in section two hereof, subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions as more particularly set forth herein, providing for enforcement and penalties for violations, providing for definitions, interpretations, and repealing conflicts, providing for separability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilwoman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five at ten o'clock a.m. in City Council Chambers, three one five, East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three three six zero two.
Thank you. Okay, so what is council's pleasure? We have the ordinance after one-thirty, but would you want to knock out a couple of staff reports? It's not, oh, we don't have one. So we can go right into the sixty-six? Okay, let's go to sixty-six. Let's rock and roll.
That's why I was out for a little bit. I have a budget meeting with someone at twelve-thirty, but other than that, I can go to whenever.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think we're going to go on. I bet you we're going to be out, yeah. I'm going to assume we're going to break it probably right at twelve-thirty, I'm guessing. Yeah. Okay, so sixty-six. Anybody online to present?
Maybe we can go to sixty-seven while we're waiting for folks to come for sixty-six because that's Mr. Shelby.
Okay. Mr. Shelby, are you prepared to present for item sixty-seven?
No, because I have nothing to say.
Okay.
The ordinance speaks for itself. It's here for first reading consideration. You generally take public comment for first readings now if you wish. And other than that, it is for council's consideration. It is consistent with your direction.
Thank you for your presentation. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to sixty-seven? Sixty-six, sixty-seven. Are you none, is there a motion to close?
Aye.
We have a motion to close from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. A motion to move sixty-seven was, I'm sorry, read the ordinance. It's an ordinance, that's right. Councilwoman Maniscalco.
I see home rule written in here, remember those days? An ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, establishing the two thousand twenty-five City of Tampa Charter Review Advisory Commission in accordance with the City of Tampa Home Rule Charter of nineteen seventy-five as amended, section ten point ten, providing for separability, providing an effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilwoman Maniscalco, a second from Councilwoman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five at ten o'clock a.m. in City Council Chambers, three one five, East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three three six zero two.
Thank you. And I see the staff is here for sixty-six now?
Good morning, I apologize.
That's okay, we're moving.
We're moving, sorry. Sorry about that. Kamaria Pettis-Mackel from the Legal Department. I do have a few slides in order to explain this matter.
Okay.
Just catch my breath for a second. File number.
Take your time.
File number E two thousand twenty-five dash eight is an ordinance regarding proposed changes to chapter nine of the City of Tampa Code, which is regarding code enforcement. Code section nine dash two is regarding definitions. These are the proposed changes. They are underlined that the city is proposing to change in the code, specifically regarding the first point, the addition of code enforcement special magistrates to be, for the city attorney's office to be allowed to engage outside counsel to be the code enforcement special magistrates. This change is proposed for several reasons. First, as city councils are aware or recall, city council recognized the volunteer code enforcement special magistrates that the city had for several years. At one point, the volunteers went down to approximately two volunteers. There were actually some occasions that some of the volunteers were not available to conduct the code enforcement hearings, and as a result, some hearings were canceled. Canceled hearings means creates a backlog of our code enforcement cases. So that's reason number one. Additionally, there has been some public comment about the cost associated with hiring outside counsel for code enforcement matters. Just so the city is aware, there was already a cost associated with hiring outside counsel for code enforcement special magistrates. We had an outside counsel at code enforcement hearings in order to provide advice to the volunteer special magistrates. There was already that cost already in existence for the code enforcement special magistrate hearings. Finally, this change for the code enforcement special magistrate is proposed because the city had a few cases that were appealed to circuit court regarding matters that were heard by our volunteer code enforcement special magistrates. At the conclusion of those appellate cases, there were some rulings that the orders from the volunteer code enforcement special magistrates were not sufficient. Currently, the law firm that is used for the code enforcement special magistrate, they provide all of the orders. They provide them, they provide complete details of findings of fact, and the city is more comfortable with the orders that the law firm provides regarding this matter. As stated, the provision regarding the proposed change for repeat violation mirrors the Florida statute, and we're just trying to amend the code in order to meet the Florida statute. Code section nine dash six, special settlement for liens. The city is trying to update this code section. Currently, the provision that's in the code is outdated, and this process is not followed. Section nine dash six, special settlements for liens is only applicable when the code enforcement special magistrate loses jurisdiction to hear fine reduction requests. This proposed revision removes a process that the code does not, that does not exist. Currently, the legal department provides settlement offers for code enforcement liens based upon the city's adopted policies. Appointed code enforcement.
Value of something. The one that says twenty percent of the value of the property. Property could be worth a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand. So they can go up to twenty percent of that, of two hundred thousand or forty thousand?
What the Florida, that is what the intention of this statute is, yes. That's in the Florida statute.
And how do we come up with the twenty percent?
We would provide that information to the special magistrate, and the special magistrate will make that determination.
No, no, I'm saying how do we get, if a value of something is something, how do we come up with a twenty percent of that based on what we think that the special magistrate is going to use time in?
No, we're, I'm sorry?
In other words, I'm just using a hypothetical question. If a value of an entity is four hundred thousand, okay? And we're saying that we can place, exceed the twenty, may not exceed twenty percent, so we can go up to twenty percent of a value of a four hundred thousand.
Right.
Right?
Right.
And what is the value of twenty percent to four hundred thousand?
That will be up to the special magistrate to decide.
I understand that. But we also, a hundred, twenty percent of that is eighty thousand. So we can go up to eighty thousand of a value of something for the fees, I guess it's for the fees of the special magistrate, I'm not sure.
It is not the fees for the special magistrate. It's a penalty assessed for demolishing a historic property.
Not that I know of any values of where I'm at that's going to do this because I don't have that to no degree. I'm just saying that the twenty percent seems kind of high to me on anything. But that's just my opinion.
That's statute, though. That's coming from Florida.
I understand.
Interestingly enough, I was going to say the opposite, that if you're going to tear down a historic structure, you should certainly have to pay more than twenty percent. So I echo some of the comments I've gotten in the public regarding that, but it sounds like you're appealing, or you're sticking to statute.
Right.
Florida statute on that. My other question, I, do you have folks in the public who, we got an email this morning. There, it seems like Ebor in particular is really interested in these and would like, folks had requested that this be a workshop instead of just an ordinance because folks didn't know this was coming. So I don't know if there's any way that we could, maybe, the comments I've gotten are from Ebor Heights and VM Ebor. So if there's a way that maybe we could do a meeting with the neighborhoods to ask about these because these are the areas that really have these types of properties that they're very concerned about. But one of the things that we had a public comment today was the reasoning or why you chose to motion to see an executive order instead of just spelling out the policy itself in the ordinance, which does make sense. It sounds like it would be stronger if instead of referencing an executive order, you simply just took that language and put it into the ordinance. And I did want to get an answer to that question.
So as I'm here today to make changes to chapter nine, there is a process in order to change the provision of the code. Having the policies and procedures for settlement of code enforcement liens is in an executive order. In order for amendments to be made quicker and easier based upon whatever's going on in the community, or if there's a matter that could be quickly changed through an amendment of the policy, that is why it is not in the code. Otherwise, if we put it in the code, it's a more, it's a more drawn-out process in order to change the code for a quick amendment to a policy or concern that we would have for a settlement of a lien. And that's why it's not in the code.
Yes, but generally speaking, we're the ones that would change policy. Executive orders shouldn't be changing policy.
So there is a charter provision regarding executive, the authority to do executive orders, and that is in the charter. And, I mean, Mr. Shelby is not here, but that is in the charter for executive orders to be executed by the mayor regarding policies and procedures. And that's why it's not in the code.
But again, I would prefer, I would like to see this, I would like to see the policy or the executive order language go into the policy if there needs to be an executive order. I'm just really uncomfortable with executive order changing policy, like on, I mean, it sounds, the way you described it, it seems like that's something that we can do, that the mayor can do at any time, when really, policy shouldn't be changing on a dime. I'm just, I'm concerned by that.
I think the clarification is that is, we can control, so if it's not covered by ordinances passed by the city council, if it's not covered by ordinances by the city council, the administration running the city has, the mayor has the authority to issue.
Yes, but that's why I'm saying it should be an ordinance and not referencing an executive order.
Mr. Shelby.
Can I?
Okay, Councilman Carlson.
First of all, I agree with you, with Councilmember Hertek, that we should continue this and have a new public, a new first public hearing. But you came to exactly the same conclusion I did, which is that why are there so many references to executive order in here?
There's so, just for clarification, Mr. Chair, there's only one reference, and it's just in the settlement. I just want to clarify that. There's not, it's not throughout this, it's not throughout the ordinance.
I have it on my phone, I can't search it, but I, anyway. But that same, that same section, what we're doing is delegating city council's power to the city attorney. Remember the whole thing where we found out the city attorney, since two thousand eighteen, was approving settlements without our approval because of a city attorney's two paragraph? What we're doing here is we're delegating this. And not, I have not heard complaints of this administration. The last administration, there were complaints that the waiver of liens was arbitrary. And we need to make sure that it's handled correctly. What we're doing is we're delegating to the mayor, and we're delegating to the city attorney. And so I think we need to have more conversations about it. If it comes up today, I'll vote no. But I hope that we will change this and address it. I don't think that, I don't think that city council should, the perception is that city council is weak compared to the mayor. We're only weak because we delegate the powers that we already have to the administration or the city attorney.
So what's before us today is a first reading of an ordinance. We have a choice to adopt this, continue this. I mean, what are the options of council, Mr. Shelby?
You have, well, first of all, continuance is always in order. But secondly, you can move this on to second reading. And if there are changes to be made, it would have to go back to first reading, if that's council's pleasure. If council has questions about it and wishes me to take a look at it or have a discussion offline, you have a choice. You can continue it, or you can read it by title only on first reading.
Councilwoman Hertek.
I would prefer to continue this because, again, the folks who sent detailed comments have concerns, and these are the areas that often have code complaints. So I would prefer that they understand it before we pass it. Because I'm, after reading it, I haven't had time to fully understand it. So I don't know if there's enough time to do it by October ninth.
How's that schedule look?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
We have six.
Yes, ma'am.
Kamaria Pettis-Mackel from the record, for the record, from the Legal Department. I'm a little confused of the, what direction city council is asking. I don't understand.
I'll try to sum it up. So what I'm hearing is there was concern from two council persons about issues pertaining to the ordinance and first reading. So what I'm hearing is that maybe it would be best that we continue this item to resolve those concerns and bring it back at another date. Now, whether that's the will, we haven't had a vote, so I don't know if that's the will of council, but yes, go ahead.
And what are those concerns? I hear one issue about an executive order, an executive order.
I think those concerns could come, if there are those concerns, I think they could come.
I can forward you the emails I've gotten from the community, and we. I can forward you the emails I've gotten from the community, and we can talk about it, but I literally, I got one at twelve thirty this morning, so I haven't had time to fully go through it, but the fact that folks are asking us, we don't generally get this in-depth of questions, so I'm, I'm going to motion to, uh, continue it, and then ha- I'm happy to reach out and talk to the community members, work with you, try to figure out what the next steps are. So I would, um, I motioned to move it to, um, where we have a lot of time, which is November sixth.
Second, so that motion's in order to continue this for the, for the comfort of council, and if, we'll see if this passes or not, and then we can have it for the discussion. So we have a motion to continue this item to November sixth from Councilwoman Hurtak, a second from Councilman Carlson, Councilman Vera.
Thank you very much. I mean, so all, uh, i- is there any, um, I'm, I'm inclined to support as a professional courtesy, i- is there any prejudice suffered or significant challenges by continuing to this time? I would imagine not, but I just.
Councilman Vera, we're continuing our process with code enforcement hearings as usual.
That's what I thought. Okay, yeah, no, but I all support as a courtesy, I got the.
Okay, so we have a motion for Council, uh, Hurtak, a second from Councilman Carlson to continue the item to November sixth. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Ayes have it unanimously, the item's continued to November sixth, thank you.
Should I, should I make one more statement, just so, so she has some direction at least from me?
Well, I, I think, let's, we, we could, we could.
I think we both reach out.
I, I think we do that between now and then, I think it's more appropriate than doing it during this meeting. Okay, so that finishes that portion of the bene- business today. We're on staff reports, I believe, what we have items sixty-nine? What do we do with sixty-nine now? Hold on, what do we have left? Sixty-nine and seventy-four.
Mr. O'Hara is here.
Mr. Rojera. This is the season of Dennis Rojera.
My cup runneth over.
Lucky you.
Lucky me. Good morning, good morning, council. Dennis Rojera, chief financial officer. Of course, this is item number sixty-nine, the amended and restated reimbursement resolution for various non-ad valorem projects. Uh, the historical information of, of course, is in the package, the various iterations, and we've also provided at council's request, kind of a summation, I, itemizing the projects that have already been previously approved through resolutions, and, uh, when applicable, also provided council the amount of debt financing that council has had approved. And then, of course, we have the new projects before you for approval today. We have the brief PowerPoint, excuse me, PowerPoint presentation that we provided, ready to go, if that's council's pleasure, and, uh, let me.
I think in the interest of time, you could, you know, kind of go through it quickly, because we've all seen this multiple times. Yeah, okay, but I mean, I, I don't think we have to dwell on it, and I think there'll probably be more questions than.
Mainly just a list of projects, if we could just.
Yeah, that's what, that's what he has.
Yes, that's, that's the PowerPoint. Thank you, ma'am. Before, if I could have the project up, please, and before I go through the project, again, I just want to be very clear that we're not asking council to approve any debt issuances today. This merely approves the ability, or proves us to go forward and start spending money on projects that conceivably will be funded from debt financing. I also, however, want to be very clear that if permission is given to go forward these projects and we start spending money, it will have to be paid for from someplace. Thank you in the back for putting the presentation up. And as I stated before, uh, we talked about the previously approved reimbursement resolutions and projects, and you see them here. We'll begin with the public safety projects, and again, the center column is the reimbursement estimate, and to the right, again, when applicable, the amount of funding, debt financing, excuse me, that council has approved, and you can see go down, these were approved October twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two, and the projects continue. The initial resolution was not to exceed, you see on the slide there, eighty million dollars. And again, I've got some more slides on this, this is simply the public safety portion. Before I continue moving, though, and I'll use public safety training facilities as an example, I want to be very clear again that just because council has approved debt financing on the right there, does not necessarily mean that, that will be the only time we come to you for financing for a particular project. The public safety training facilities, for instance, the reimbursement estimate is thirteen million, as approved by council in two thousand twenty-two. We've simply financed the design associated with that. So there will be, I anticipate, forthcoming requests for bonding associated with the public safety training facilities, for example, but this is what we have to date. And it's the Parks and Recreation and Convention Center. And the various general government projects, again, approved in two thousand twenty-two and recently financed a couple months ago. Moving into the reimbursement resolution from two thousand twenty-four, we expanded upon the fire maintenance and supply facility and the fire station number twenty-four, increasing the reimbursement estimate as we continued with these projects and their projections, and you see we've issued just under eight million dollars of bond financing for them. And again, a graphic depiction of that eighty million plus fifty million, you have a hundred and thirty million, you see how they've been subdivided. So that was the past, that's what council has approved to date, and now you have the new requests before you. And here they are, the fire department projects and the parks and recreation projects. The mobility department projects and convention center, uh, you'll note that all of the mobility department projects are grant matches. And the new project total, again, you'll see a hundred and five million dollars total. And then we combine them, so council and the public has one complete view of what we've approved so far and what we're asking for today. A hundred and thirty million, the one hundred and five million for a total of two hundred and thirty-five million. And a graphic depiction of same, of the total so far.
Councilman Metacca.
And that completes my presentation, council. Can I answer questions? If I don't know the answer to particular question, questions, I'll find out.
Thank you very much. So my question was.
Yes.
And I mentioned it at the last meeting about the CIT renewal.
Yes.
And the amount that we have allocated for public safety and what we're allowed to spend that CIT on, I know that in here you have the Howard Avenue Annex and the forensics building, which we estimate could be around forty million dollars.
Yes.
I know that the number shown here was five million dollars, I believe. My question is, well, I'm sorry, four million, and then reimbursement estimate five point three billion. I just want to make sure that, looking forward, that if we can, we should utilize some of that CIT money towards this, because I know we're going to be bonding a lot, and this is just the beginning of what the total cost is going to be, if it doesn't go up, because this is Tampa. Um, I just want to make sure that we, we use, we use CIT towards that in order to not have to bond so much and save money on interest, uh, because, uh, and I spoke to, since our last meeting, I spoke to several mayors from the past, asking, you know, how they funded projects, and, and they were in agreeance. You know, the CIT has been used for, uh, plenty for, for public safety, this falls under public safety, I'm just trying to save as much money as possible in the future. That's it, thank you.
Oh, uh, I, I can comment a, a little bit to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
And elaborate, uh, of course, as council knows, and maybe members of the public don't, uh, the CIT version two is going to be a, a very significant amount of funding, so over a fifteen-year period, it's going to get somewhat of a slow start, though, because it doesn't go into effect until December of next year. We have identified at least preliminarily what, what the initial funding will be spent on, it's in the capital improvement program, and, and this, I think, will be a very, very good nexus. As we, the mayor and city council decide what exactly to spend that community investment tax money on, and as we go forward in terms of the pace of these projects and when the funding will be needed, and if the reimbursement resolution is approved, it's all about flexibility, it's all about providing the mayor and council flexibility as to what we fund those projects with. Right now, I, uh, we're at the beginning of, of quite the process when it comes to projects being approved and completed, and the influx of funding that the CIT will give us. So I think there's a great deal of flexibility, but it will entail future discussions between the mayor and city council.
Thank you, and you're right, future discussions, and I think we need to put this out, uh, there, that we need to humble ourselves now and future councils and, and future mayor mayors, uh, in doing the right thing, because there's, there's a lot of ego in politics, a lot of big legacy projects, but we have a lot of needs. You know, uh, you, you showed the list, we have fire needs, we have police needs, we have community needs, uh, just do the right thing. We have, the CIT is a blessing, because in this political environment, when things get killed at the ballot box, the CIT renewal, a lot, a fifteen-year extra lifeline is going to save us a lot of money. We have these triple-A bond ratings, we have so much to be proud of, but in this volatile financial environment, we don't know what, what it's going to be like in the next few years, we don't know what the economy's going to look like. You know, things are good now, the, the, the stock market is up, and interest rates might be coming down. Uh, uh, it's, my phone is breaking news every, every day and all day long, you know? Nothing is certain. So as we move forward and look at the next fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years and future leadership that gets elected, humble yourselves in doing what is necessary. And we have a lot of necessary projects here, but it's very easy for a politician to, uh, go off the rails and say, I want to, I want to do something, you know, it's not about doing something big and impactful, it's about doing what's right and necessary, wants and needs. And we have a lot of needs, we have a lot of public safety, infrastructure needs, stormwater folks are here, we're making those investments, I mean, the, that's what is important to the future of this city. Thank you.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, um, the, um, if we approve, i- in the next year and a half, if, if the city council approves all the debt that this administration is proposing, we're going to throw the next city council, the next a- administration into a debt crisis. And, uh, just to preface whatever nasty email the administration wants to send, um, I've talked to other cities and counties, I've talked to experts on financing, and when people find out the debt of our city, they're appalled by it. Our ratings are high for now, because we've got, uh, for several factors, but we're on the precipice of, of, uh, changing that, and if we add the six or eight hundred million, whatever more debt that the administration wants, we're going to, we're, we're, we're going to put the next administration, next city council in a, in a crisis. Keep in mind, at, at the current rates, uh, that our children and grandchildren are going to be paying for the next thirty years, um, eighty to a hundred percent of the principal and interest, just so we can rush some projects now. We've got us, the point is, we've got to start saying no. They, they, the next city council, next administration, we don't have to before, they're going to be either forced to raise taxes, or they're going to have to go into austerity mode, like Pam Mauroy did in the, in the Great Recession. I'm certain that the people in the city and the, and the, and the people in the community don't want us to lay off hundreds of people so that we can pay for the interest that this administration spent. We've got to put some austerity measures in now. We also don't know what the economy is going to do, as what was just said. We know that the floods and other things have had an impact on, on taxes, we, we need to do sensitively, we can't completely max out the credit cards over the next year and a half, and we're not at that point yet, obviously, but we need to stop it, and there are projects that are nice to have that we shouldn't include. I think that, um, you know, example is the West River Walk, another example is the Ashley Street project, these fire station projects, I think, are essential, and there are a few that are, that are still on here that need to be approved. As a member of the public, Ms. Bluma said before, um, I, I think we should approve these one by one, if, if, if the only choice is to, I, I would recommend that, that they go back and just, just pass a resolution, create new resolutions to add these one by one to the existing list, but the way the resolution is written now, it restates the original projects, and then it adds the additional projects, and the implication that there is that we're reaffirming the old projects, uh, which include Hannah Avenue and, and other projects that I don't support. So if, um, if those projects are still included in the resolution, my vote today's going to be no. If they come back individually and say, we want to support the fire stations and, and other projects that are essential, my vote will be yes. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hurtak. I'm sorry, Councilman Miranda.
I was not even going to speak about the CIT tax. But since you all brought it up, I guess I have to. I have never voted for the CIT tax. Let me tell you why. It goes to someone else in a much larger number than it goes to the city of Tampa. Let me give you a little instance for that. The total sums collected in the whole county, city of Tampa, as small as it is compared to the county, puts in about thirty percent of the total collection. You know what we get back? Twenty percent. I'm just running it out, and, and you can correct me anytime you want, uh, Mr. Rojera.
No, no.
No, you can collect, I don't get upset with that. In fact, I, I, I welcome that. That's number one. First of all, it's for fifteen years. The other side, for fifteen years, gets eight hundred and fifty million dollars. What do we get? I'm going to leave that up to the, someone else to say, I think it's like twenty million a year, maybe? I'm not sure, but I'm taking a guess.
A, a little less than that to begin.
Yeah, I took a guess, I'm not, I'm not as smart as anyone thinks I am, I'm not, but I just listen around and walk around. So that's twenty times fifteen. So they get eight hundred and fifty million. What is twenty times fifteen? That's what you get. However, if there's a shortfall in the collection, notice I say we're bringing thirty, and we only collect twenty, but if there's a shortfall in the collection, we're going to pay thirty. Isn't that nice? That was a real smart move by all of us. So I don't want somebody pounding, I'm not pounding my chest, I'm just telling you the facts, Republican believer or not, I'm, I'm speaking to myself, really. I don't know what else to tell you. What is the difference between a bond and a loan? It's the same thing, in a way, however, you could go get a loan for four point four percent anywhere. That's what I think the bond market is now, I'm not sure, because I'm not that smart. And again, I'm going to say that I'm not that smart. So anybody wants to get a loan for four point four percent in this city of Tampa, let me know, because I want to go there also, at any bank. So that's why you bond. But a bond has a different feel of the word instead of a loan. A loan is a little bit harder. A bond, you think, oh, we're going to bond together, have a nice time, and go to the fair and all that kind of stuff. No, it's about money. But the bonding market, it's a most convenient way and less expensive way for an entity of this size, or government of this size, or larger or smaller, to do the business, because they're actually doing the taxpayer a service, by getting it at a cheaper rate. Yes, it's costly to get there, I'm not going to deny that. So there is no difference between a bond and an interest, other than the amount of money that you're spending on interest. So therefore, I'd rather bond than go bar at the bank, because you're not going to get four point four percent at the bank. If you are, let me know, because I want to go to that bank.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hurtak.
Thank you so much. I think one of the things that's confusing about this is, like, for example, the first page, the reimbursement resolution, two thousand twenty-two, nine fifteen, has the Howard Avenue Annex Forensics Building, the reimbursement estimate of five point three, and we put the four million out already, but we already know that the total of that's, or is going to be around forty million, and that's nowhere in here, in terms of future.
That has been provided, uh, and we can provide that, that has been provided as part of the budget presentation for fiscal year twenty-six, the forty-odd million dollar item.
Still unapproved.
I'm sorry, say again.
Still unapproved.
Still unapproved.
Still unapproved, yes, yes. And at, and I don't mean to interrupt, but just to clarify, yes, back in, back in October of two thousand twenty-two, this was the envisioned reimbursement estimate. this was the envisioned reimbursement estimate to go forward and start spending money.
Well, and that's sort of, I think, what is missing from this, is we have the reimbursement estimate, we have the series that was approved, that we got the bonds, we got the money, we paid forward in these, but we don't know the total costs. I mean, on this chart doesn't show us the total cost of these projects.
Understood.
And how much, I mean, so I don't know what's been encumbered, what's been spent, like, the overages, and that's, I think, one of the big concerns. Because I share Councilmember Carlson's concern and Councilmember Maniscalco's concern about bonding. I mean, I think the CIT is fine, but we can't tap that till 2026, so we're still looking at how do we bond now? And then I'm, we don't have money for Howard Avenue, for this building, that is going to break ground probably, I mean, it seems within this calendar year. But in this reimbursement resolution, we have $48.7 million for fire stations that we can't even start looking at until we have started and built the fleet and supply. So this is the part, I mean, we all agree that these projects are important, but why would we put a reimbursement resolution for $48.7 million right now for something we aren't even going to be able to start while we're here? These are the kinds of questions, I mean, we all agree that they're important things, but our time in office, maybe next year we'll be able to start. And again, it makes no sense to me why the Howard Avenue Forensics Building is 5.6 million. And great, that's been able to help the beginning of it, that's been able to help the design, the engineering, all of that. Why aren't we just doing that for these projects? I do understand that we want to have the money to do them, but also, knowing where we are and the kind of money we have, why don't we, why aren't we putting reimbursement resolutions for those beginning aspects?
You know, it's interesting, I guess this is chair privilege, maybe you jump in in the middle of that, right? Because it's interesting you brought that up because, Howard Avenue, I mean, it's my understanding, the only thing that this council's authorized is the design that 4. whatever million dollars.
Yes, sir.
So reference the assumption that we're going to see shovels in the ground there, we better not be seeing shovels in the ground there because that project hasn't been authorized yet. So good luck trying to find money without council's approval to pay for something if you start building it. I hope somebody in that department has a really large endowment somewhere that we don't know about. The, your other question about, one thing I appreciate about this, though, is, one of my frustrations, remember we asked, I said, you know, I need to know, with a council-approved vote, when I vote for something, that the intention of you all to do that is bonding and what that full cost is. So in some ways, I actually appreciate that coming to us like this.
I do too, but what I'm saying is, it's not consistent. This is the part that confuses me, is in this reimbursement resolution, why you wouldn't have brought forward that project too.
And I'm happy to answer that. Let me preface this by saying, I want council and the public to have all of the information they want. And from a project perspective, again, and I'll use the Hannah Avenue Annex Forensics, this, again, was almost three years ago. And at that time, it was envisioned that we would only want to start spending money for, as you said, ma'am, design. So we started spending money for the design, and then you see, in June, we did a bond financing issuance to pay us back, and that's what the reimbursement resolution is for. We are not coming to you at this juncture, although we can, if that's council's wish, we're not coming to you at this juncture to ask for any more approvals associated with the Howard Avenue Annex. This is simply historical. Now, in the debt presentation associated with the July budget presentation, we have, now it's in a different source, we have laid out what we anticipate to be the debt issuance calendar or timeframes with debt issuance 1, debt issuance 2, debt issuance 3, based on, at this time, what funding is going to be needed and when. So I really, I can't really speak to October of 2022, but I can tell you, we're not coming to you asking for additional reimbursement, reimbursement resolution authority for the Howard Annex because we don't anticipate we're going to spend any of that money yet for some of the reasons that have already been mentioned. Does that clarify?
Yeah, I need to get some clarification, too, about the purpose of this resolution.
Yes.
And it kind of bounces, I think, what Councilman Carlson said and some of my concern. Why, so much of this presentation today is things that council's already authorized and approved.
Yes.
Whether I like some of that stuff or not, it's done, asked and answered. Why are these being included in this resolution? Why don't we just have another clean resolution with just the additional expenditures?
And we can do that. The concern was that that was, and these are my words, that that was piecemealing the overall picture of what we intend to do from a reimbursement resolution perspective.
I mean, I do like the comprehensive look at debt and what we had previously approved. What I don't, what actually, what I don't want to do is today vote on something that ends up putting me in a position to vote no because I'd already voted no against one of the issues before that's included in that first debt issuance.
I see.
So in other words, I've already voted no on a debt issuance that the council has approved, but if, when this rolled together, you forced me to vote no, but if it's on the new stuff, I would vote yes, on the new.
Well, then, may I suggest that if you're, and believe it or not, I view this as progress, if you're, if council is happy with the comprehensive look, historical and what we're asking for now, but doesn't want that as part of the resolution, we can bring back a resolution, as you and I think Councilman Carlson suggested, of just the new projects.
Okay, I think Councilman Hertek is going to finish something up, and then I'll go to Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, I did, I just, this reimbursement resolution and projects has things that we may want to do but are more wishlist items, but not having the Howard Avenue here doesn't make sense. Why don't we have those projects that we know we're going to need the money for, why aren't they on here?
We haven't approved that Howard Avenue.
But that's what I'm, we haven't approved any of these things either.
Haven't we approved the, hasn't council said this is what, these are priority projects we've approved?
Well, we would like to prioritize the fire stations, but unfortunately, we can't do anything until they're moved.
I'm sorry. And again, I'm doing my best to communicate, and I'll use that annex as an example. Council has already approved the annex, you see, of $5.3 million, and that was for design. At this time, we're not prepared to bring council a decision packet on moving any further with that project. This has simply been for the design, we've paid ourselves back. If we decide to continue with the annex project, we would bring council a contract for construction, a bond financing paperwork for the financing, et cetera, et cetera. But that is not the administration's desire at this time, and I would submit that the totality of the project has been included in the capital improvement program. We're simply not ready. Had we come today and asked for a reimbursement resolution of $40 million, that would have empowered us to go spend up to $40 million.
Yes, and that, again, I think that's my concern, is that, I mean, the chief stood up and basically said, "We have to have this." So while you say, "We haven't decided to go forward," we're going forward. I mean, the administration has, or at least the chief has made it clear, that this is a project that's going to be going forward. So again, I...
And I don't mean to interrupt you, I don't disagree with anything you said, but it can only go forward if council approves it.
But that's the same thing for all of these projects.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Carlson.
I just want to get back to the resolutions. I think your goal, based on what you're saying, your goal is to try to simplify, keep everything in one place, and also probably provide transparency.
Yes.
And so I appreciate that. It makes it more complicated, having these other resolutions, but I think, for the sake of being able to approve things, it's better not to have us go back and vote for the things in the past.
Understood.
So it's going to make it more complicated, and we should have a total list, but that probably will be in, like, the summary or something, or it will ride along instead of being part of the resolution. But if you could get a resolution with just the new ones, especially if we could do one by one, I would be willing to approve that. I would rather approve project by project to add to the list instead of to reaffirm the existing list. Because in the current resolution, it has the existing projects, it's an addendum, but it appears, the way it's written, that we're reaffirming those.
Understood, no, I absolutely see that perspective.
Okay, so...
That was not the intent, of course, but I absolutely...
So should we entertain a motion to continue this?
That would be my suggestion.
What's a good time? What's a good date? Somebody grab me a date.
I'm sorry, say again? Not long.
Should we do it October 6?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, so we hear a motion to continue, item 69, October 6, 2025. We have a motion, Councilman Maniscalco, a second from?
Charlie Miranda.
Exactly, I heard Councilman Carlson first, so Councilman Carlson, all those in favor?
I tried to throw your curve up, but you hit it.
Oh, yeah, there you go. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, October 9?
It's close enough.
Okay, let's do that again, we have a motion to continue this, October 9, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Council, did you want to say something?
No.
I'll say your hand up. Okay. Is that good?
It's good for me, it's good for council.
I think we're good.
Thank you, council.
Thank you for your patience. Appreciate it.
Not at all.
Okay, we have one other, item 80, right? Is that what we have left? I'm sorry, 74, 74. So close, you know. I just assumed it was fire stations, it must have been, you must have run it. Item 74, stormwater, we don't have any stormwater issues, do we?
No, it's all, they're all solved. Good afternoon, Council, Brandon Campbell, interim director of the Mobility Department, and I'm here to introduce our team to present an update on the Stormwater Master Planning Effort. We have with us this afternoon, from Applied Sciences, Eli Arag and Taylor Langford, and they're going to go through a PowerPoint that was uploaded to on base previously. And then Yuan Li, our Stormwater Engineering Manager, has a little bit of follow-up to their presentation as well. So I'll invite Eli up to start.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Councilman Vera.
Yes, sir, at 12:30, I have to step outside for a city-related call on the budget, so I'll be back, it shouldn't take more than 15 minutes, so just...
If we're not here, we will leave without you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yuan Li, Stormwater Engineering Manager, and we are glad to be back to report the status of citywide watershed master plan and the progress we made since the workshop in May. And it was presented to the council for the first time. And in addition, we want to give you an overview of the coastal master plan that is a parallel regional planning effort led by the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. This topic was brought up at the Stormwater Budget Workshop a couple weeks ago because this is very important, is Florida's first comprehensive and regional flood adaptation plan, and is a critical supplement to the city program. With that, our Placenses team is here today to report the quarterly update for the master plan program.
Thank you, Yuan. Good morning, Eli Arag, Applied Sciences, thank you for inviting us back here. We have a presentation here for you today, if somebody can put it up. This is our second quarterly update, and we're going to have, basically, a quick, we can do this slide here. Basically, we just said, do a quick recap, give you some resident feedback that we've gotten since the last presentation that we've had, and then give you an update where the program is. Quickly, this is our team, we introduced ourselves last time. I'm president of Applied Sciences, also Mark Hammond, former executive with Swiftwood and Taylor Langford, also, he heads up our modeling team and is our lead for the water resources. So quickly, again, we talked last time about how this master planning effort fits into the continuum of a stormwater project, and it's very important to keep that in mind because this is where a lot of the projects for the city are going to come from that deal directly with stormwater. We have the 46 basins that we discussed last time, it's actually 47, one of them was broken into two, and we overrated them right here on the districts, various districts with the city. This is the list of the basins that were previously studied before we started our effort, and this is the list of the basins that we are currently studying right now to fill in the gaps, give priority to those basins that needed immediate attention. And we have a number of them here that you see going, and also serves as a quick reminder that we have six consultants that are working on this effort led by Applied Sciences and the list that you see here, working on the various basins that we shared with you last time, with their proposed completion date for the floodplains. So since the last time, the city sent out a mail-out asking for feedback, pictures, documentation, photos of the flooding that occurred, and we received over 2,000 photos from the various residents in these basins, and those photos and documentations are still trickling in. I'm going to share with you some of the ones that we showed, we picked some from some of the basins that we're working on. This is in the El Prado Basin. Those pictures are in Lemon Street, and again, those were mostly from Milton and Helene, and you see the dates on the bottom. North River West, Ebor City, and North River East. And also, keep in mind that part of the reason why we asked for this photo documentation is we use this information to validate, calibrate, verify a lot of the information that we already have as we're running the models in these various basins. So there has been in-the-field data collection, surveying, assessment of the connectivity. These are some pictures here of Taylor and Palmetto Beach, some other staff in El Prado Outfall. This is the Concordia Park Outfall information that's been collected in the stormwater inventory. The city had a lot of that information already. Our site visits will confirm the condition, adding any new assets, pointing out anything that needed maintenance, et cetera. That all happens during these site visits. We are also implementing, as we mentioned last time, a component to take into consideration seal of arise into these future projects. This is some of the ongoing modeling efforts on 18th Street, Palmetto Beach, the Encore Channel side area, and again, the El Prado Outfall that I mentioned earlier. This is the list of the projects or the basins that we're going to be looking at next. And we started a link that's publicly facing, that summarizes the efforts on each one of these basins, where the public can go, look at the inventory, look at the status, and even give us feedback where they can. So from a schedule perspective, since the last time we met, we've completed the data collection, we're on schedule for the February 2026 for the existing floodplains in Group 1, and June 2026 for the existing floodplains for Group 2. The projects for Group 1 will be slated to be developed by August 2026, and December 2026 for the rest of the group. The final report is expected in 2027, and again, the budget that we mentioned last time is the $5 million for the program. Also, since the last time we met, the city met with OPTI and some other folks to look at some advanced management systems for outfalls, intelligent systems, cloud-based, and these, as I mentioned last time, those were successfully used in other parts in the Tampa Bay area, and we're looking to see how we can implement them in this program. We're also looking at various green infrastructure in the area. These pictures are from previous projects we've done where we have pervious pavers, that's load-bearing for the parking, non-load-bearing for the sidewalk, tree wells, pervious concrete on the right-hand side for Fifth Street, and some green gutters. Those are some templates that we've done for the city of St. Pete and Pinellas County. And what's interesting about this right now is with the new stormwater rule, they are actually... And what's interesting about this right now is with the new stormwater rule, they are actually encouraging the implementation of low-impact development or green infrastructure to help with the, uh, with implementing the rule and being in compliance with the rule. So we're very much aware of that, and we'll be taking that into consideration as we're providing these projects. And finally, the last slide that we have is, is what we mentioned last time, that this will help us get lower, a, a lower rating for, uh, the CRS, which means a, a bigger discount for, on, on flood insurance. And with that, we'd like to take, um, any questions that you may have.
Counsel, have questions? Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, the, 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 the research that I've done on stormwater always gets back to what you showed toward the end, which is try and install pervious pavement sidewalks, um, green areas. In your analysis, when you're finished, will you be able to estimate how much an impact we might be able to have by implementing that? And, and/or do you know from your experience what percentage impact it would have? Is it like five percent impact or fifty percent impact? Um, it, it seems to be a major recommendation of modern stormwater, um, management.
Right, right. So without getting too technical, one of the things that we do analyze is what we call directly connected impervious area versus not directly connected. So directly connected, think about a spout coming down from the roof, hitting your driveway and getting straight to the road, right? So when you disconnect that, you send it to the grass first and then to the driveway. So this is one way to, to kind of think of that. Our modeling does take DCIA, what we call DCIA, and, and non-DCIA into consideration. However, uh, at the project level, when we get to the project level, is when we can take into consideration the green infrastructure and how to implement it actually in the final design and the final solutions.
In your analysis, if you, if you have systemic recommendations that we can put in place of policies like that, that you see in other cities, um, like, like incentives for people to use, um, uh, pervious pavement in their yards or whatever, then, um, please let us know because we can start implementing that right away. Um, also, will your analysis show, um, the, the city is on a seven-year cycle now to do maintenance, so there are areas presumably that won't have maintenance for, for still maybe six more years. But there are also areas that we can see didn't have maintenance in the prior seven or ten years at least. And so is, will, will your analysis take into account, um, wh-what the modeling with and without the maintenance? So we can see what the impact of a lack of maintenance is or, and/or systems? Because, um, it, there, there is a, a balance we've got to find between how fast do we do the maintenance? Is seven years acceptable? Should we increase that budget? Do we even have the capacity to do it? Versus, um, versus, um, uh, the infrastructure that we have to put in?
So the, the simple, the simple answer is yes. When we go out in the field and we showed some of the folks that are out there doing the data collection, we do point, we do make a note or find out which areas may need maintenance, which areas may not need maintenance, and, and that information is shared. And as you saw in the life of that project, we started with the field investigation and then the modeling, and then we go on with the maintenance at the end. So the actual, uh, cycle of maintenance is a little bit more complicated than that because it's dependent, as you, as we know, on resources, on, on where the, where the, uh, where the, where the actual structures are and the access to them and all of that. But our modeling will actually help with this, help the city in identifying the areas that do actually need more maintenance within, within those basins.
Uh, do you wanna say something?
Yeah, if I can tell me a little bit, Yuan Li, Stormwater Engineering Manager, uh, the modeling part right now, all the consulting engineers are doing are assuming the system is well-maintained. However, just wanted to let council and the public know, or, uh, engineers working on these studies do go out to verify the information and collect another, uh, additional data and identify immediate maintenance needs and come back to the city so that we can generate work orders. But the modeling itself assume all the systems are functioning, uh, properly. That's why if we identify the flood risks, there will be some capital improvement projects proposed because assuming all the systems are well-maintained.
The, thank you. And the other thing, while you're up there, and maybe Brandon would like to answer this. You remember, um, Yuan, when we went to the, um, the county's public hearing, um, remember, um, Councilman Vera had, had made a motion to have the city partner with the county. I think Black and Beach is doing the analysis. But when we went to that public meeting a couple of months ago, constituents were asking Black and Beach, you know, what, what about my neighborhoods? And they, and Black and Beach said, if I remember correctly, you can correct me if wrong, that, that the city did not provide all the data that they needed to do the analysis. Do you know if the city, I know this is a different analysis, but they're kind of working side by side. Has that data now been given to Black and Beach or they do?
Yes, uh, and the data was already provided to Black Beach and the county. And in fact, uh, Black Beach made their final report ready already, uh, back, uh, I think early this month. They presented to the, uh, board, uh, the county board commissioners, uh, late July. So the final report is ready, and staff got the final report already, and, and the, so, as the county is forming a work, working group, including the county Swifmud and City of Temple Terrace, Plain City, and Tampa. And the, we are just awaiting the very first, uh, group to discuss further action items.
Should, should we, or have we already scheduled Black and Beach to come with staff?
Yeah, we, we need to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
When would you recommend that we set that up?
Uh, it's up to the council.
And, and you would like to present with them, I assume, right? Would you like to present with them or just have them present?
Uh, we can check. We can arrange with Black Beach and in talking with the, the county.
Did you all see a date?
Unfortunately, November sixth seems to be the first thing that we have available.
Motion for November sixth to have Black and Beach present the county's master stormwater plan with, um, city stormwater staff available.
I don't think it was a master plan, but just a kind of a, a, what went?
It's a post, uh, the study called, uh, Post-Hurricane Regional Stormwater Assessment.
Okay.
Yeah, they do have the assessment report.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that sounds like actually a good plan.
She's always a step ahead of us.
Yeah, you are a step, a step ahead. So November twentieth to come back with this plan, so maybe a nice secondary thing.
Yes.
That way you can do all in one day and just sit here.
Ooh, and we have the monthly in-person update. It's gonna be a stormwater day.
It's a trifecta. All right, thank you all.
And, and one more thing I just want to add, uh, cause, uh, in summary, we, uh, we completed the first round of public engagement. So getting all those, uh, documentations, we want to take this opportunity to thank all the residents for sharing all those documentation. It will provide valuable information, not just improve the quality of our study, but also improve the quality of our own work. And looking ahead, that around the November time, and we anticipate a number of watershed modeling gonna be ramped up, we'll start engaging the public for the second round to share the flood risks by hosting all those public meetings.
Let's just hope we don't have any additional information to add by November twentieth of the hurricane season.
Can, can you please repeat the name of the report for the motion?
For the clerk, so she can get it correct.
I think it's called, uh, Post-Hurricane Regional Stormwater Assessment.
Post-Hurricane Regional Stormwater Assessment.
We have, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Maniscalco, to add that as previously stated, report to the November twentieth stormwater, um, um, what do they call it, update? Mr. Shelby.
Yes, just, and again, the name of the com, the name of the company that's going to provide?
Black and Beach.
Is Black and Beach. And will your office then arrange for that invitation, for that date?
November twentieth.
We'll reach out.
You'll, you'll reach out.
Thank you.
To my, ju-just, what do you think about this? Have them present just before the city? That way you all have time to respond and reflect on what they've just said on that date.
So you, so your request is that the report on the twentieth, it will be that company, the Black and Beach Company, will do the first presentation, followed by City of Tampa Stormwater?
Yeah, with their, their separate presentation, but that way they'll be able to reflect on whatever was just presented.
Okay, so we have the motion as stated for November twentieth for that to come back, um, from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Miranda, you had wanted to say something.
I just want to say thank you for, for doing what you've done, but, uh, and I know this is applied science, but within that science, there's a, an area that no one knows. And that's the uncertain of what's coming, or not coming, I should say. Because up to now, we've been very fortunate that nothing's hit any part of the United States. It turned right. I am very concerned, and the question would be this, if something like happened last year was to come, where do you think we'd be at? With all the repairs and things that we've done?
That would be the next topic, if we can go back to the presentation. And we do want to share something regarding a parallel regional effort being led by the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. Okay, can we go back to the person?
Uh, let me, let me dispose of this one resolution first before we get too caught up in this. So we have a motion for Councilman Carlson, a second for Councilman Maniscalco, uh, to have the, um, Black Beach Company come and do a presentation, followed by City of Tampa's presentation on November twentieth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously? Okay, go ahead.
All right, um, Yuan Li, Stormwater Engineering Manager here. And this one is really driven by all the coastal communities. And, uh, because Tampa, like we said, Tampa is not alone. All these communities are facing the increased threats by the sea level rise, tidal flooding, and more frequent intensity rainfall and storm surge. And that's why this, this study was kind of, uh, really addressed all the neighbor, all these communities' needs. And, uh, it covers seven counties on the west coast from San Francisco to Sarasota, and impacting approximately more than four million dol, uh, four million residents. And, uh, and this study was kicked off just three months ago. It's pretty recent, and it has four phases. And, uh, community engagement, and data collection, and the risk assessment, and then the project development and the prioritization, and the final recommendations. And I also noticed there are two tracks, technical track and also community engagement track. I think both groups are meeting like monthly and, and, or every month, other months. And the city resilient office and stormwater team are both involved in this one. And we are happy to provide the, uh, like, periodical update, and we can go into this, uh, quarterly update of our master plan because this is a highly relevant topic, especially for the coastal communities. And with that, we open up any questions you may have.
I think that's good. Thank you very much for your presentation, Dan.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. I think this was a really great example of how to update us on how a project is going. I really did appreciate, the visuals were great. It was very clear what, what was going on. Really liked it. Just want to say thank you so much. The public could definitely follow this, and we really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our business for the day. We're into new business. Councilman Carlson. Councilwoman Hertek.
I've got a bit. Um, agenda review. Oh, never mind, I already did that, already did that one. Uh, a motion to recognize the City of Tampa Purchasing Department for winning yet another award. The twenty twenty-five Annual Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award from the National Procurement Institute. This is their nineteenth consecutive year winning this award, and I would like to add it to the agenda on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular council meeting under ceremonial activities.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You guys have it?
Next, I did say I would work on the, um, Budget Review Committee discussion about the, the study for the fees. Well, good news, um, we have, we have kind of already done that. Um, I have emails, uh, for, um, with the expected dates of completion for the fee studies that are requested by, um, the Budget Review Committee this morning. Um, I will share the emails with each council member, and Ms. Kapeski, she, she can present the information to the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee at their meeting tomorrow. But basically, the mobility fee topic will be, um, will be, um, on the September twenty-fifth and October thirtieth council workshops. Development, Growth and Management Fee Study is scheduled to be delivered on November first. Um, or I'm sorry, staff anticipates returning to city council for presentation in December twenty twenty-five. So, good news is, we are on our way to all three of those, um, studies being put forward.
Nice.
Additionally, wanted one more thing.
But wait, there's more.
Wait, there's more. Um, I wanted to address the memo that you all received, um, from the, uh, from the administration and Hart, talking about, um, the prioritization of the streetcar versus bus funding. And I was lucky enough to be able to have a meeting with the administration on Wednesday where we did discuss the difference between the importance of the streetcar and the importance of the bus. So, um, I really appreciate that conversation. It was really wonderful. I know I talked to you all, I had mentioned briefly about the fact that I was hoping to earmark about three million dollars to the bus. Well, it turns out I don't need nearly that much money. And so I wanted to, um, let you know that we will be talking a bit more about the bus on Wednesday. But, uh, I just wanted to say that, um, I had a really great conversation both with, um, the administration and then very later that afternoon with Hart. So we have, uh, a, a much cheaper proposal going forward, focusing on Route One and the BRT and the regional infrastructure accelerator, so I'm just happy to mention that.
Excellent, great. I love good news. Councilman Maniscalco.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion for a written staff report, uh, for January eighth. Uh, so there's plenty of time. It's, uh, to look at manatee protection zones, see what exists in the Hillsborough River, what the boundaries are. I think it may stop at Sly. Uh, if we could expand it further to the dam, I know you have to go through, um, FWC, maybe the county. I know there's, it's multi-jurisdictional. Um, just to see what exists and what we have to do to further expand that. As you all know, I'm very good friends with Rod Hatch. You may or may not know, but he's always on the river. He's kayaking on the river. I've kayaked with him on the river. We've done tours. When I was in high school, I used to row on the river. And, uh, so the river is very significant, but so are manatees.
Well, Councilwoman Hertek's very good friends with manatees.
Exactly. And, um, we need to protect them. You know, we have boats going through. We have, it's a very busy.
Does the City of Tampa have any of their own manatee protection zones? Is that something within the city of Tampa jurisdiction? I just don't know.
That's, that's part of this.
Yeah, I have the information on my desk, and I know it's, you have to go through multiple agencies to get permission and everything. So I just want to know what we have in place, uh, regarding manatee protection zones and what we have to do to move forward in order to further expand that.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco.
Written staff report.
A written staff, a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it? Anything else, sir? Councilman Miranda. She's not here. You want to do it tonight? Okay. Well, I believe that we have a person that is their birthday tomorrow. Mr. Kapeski, if you're listening. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, budget analysis. Happy birthday to you.
See, we're bringing, we're bringing the music along with us.
Exactly.
Hey, don't knock me in the back.
No, it could have gotten worse. It could have been you.
So I, uh, I, I recognize chair.
Thank you. Um, as y'all, as I spoke about earlier, and I sent you an email, I, I, you know, I'll be honest with you. Uh, this is not something I, I thought I was going to deal with on council for various reasons, and some good, some whatever, but, um, it's the, the issue with what's happening in the state of Florida with, um, the mandate that all of these, the sidewalks, the crosswalks, the public art be mandated to be destroyed. And it just, one, it just breaks my heart to see in the City of Tampa, we have so many of these beautiful, uh, crosswalks to, to classrooms that had been created by students, had been created by artists. We saw what happened with Pulse, the Pulse nightclub in Orlando, with, which was an area where forty-nine people, innocent people, were targeted because of who they loved and were shot and killed. And there was, you know, they, they've created that area as a, as a tribute to those folks that, you know, sacrificed everything just because they all wanted to show up as a community to have fun one night. And one evil person walked in and killed them all, these young people. Uh, and there was a beautiful, uh, crosswalk that was created a safe zone for people to walk to that area to pay tribute to that. But again, just here in the City of Tampa, we don't have that, we don't really have that. You know, St. Petersburg did, but we didn't. What we do have is we have these great murals, these great sidewalks. I think if. I think in Hampton Terrace, there's like a median that's got like a manatee painted in it.
Butterflies.
Butterflies, okay, I know this is something art. So we've got all these beautiful things in the City of Tampa, which makes, it designates, it's a community. It's something that really makes something special, something really noteworthy. In fact, our crosswalks to classrooms was awarded by the Florida Department of Transportation as safety enhancement. The same department now that's telling, we have to sandblast them all off the roads. You know, it's just, I almost like drew a tear when I watched these things. These kids are out there painting these things. So I created an idea, and I know this is not necessarily something that is within our standard rules or procedures. So you're welcome to push back and push this to another time. And I think Councilman Vera actually wanted to vote in favor of this, but he's not here right now. But I did this resolution. It's a resolution of the Tampa City Council condemning the actions of Governor Ron DeSantis to restrict or remove art paintings, community crosswalk expression, and safety enhancements in the state of Florida, and affirming the value of public art, diversity, and community identity providing an effective date. I wrote this up, and if anybody wants copies of it, I put it on my social media segment with the intent of doing this. But I'll spare everybody reading it, all members of council and staff should have it. But it's something that I just feel strongly about, that I feel like the City of Tampa. I, we need to make a statement. And I get, and for those that are listening, we don't have a choice because they're holding us hostage. We are dependent upon Florida Department of Transportation funding for so many things. So if they were to withhold funding from the City of Tampa because we failed to follow the rules, it's just something we can't live with. So it's, we're being held hostage by Tallahassee. This is what the legis, this is what's happening up there in Tallahassee. So really, the most that we can do right now is really register our objection, you know, use our voices, and tell people how objectionable it is for what's happening, as far as I'm concerned. And I think, so, Councilman Carlson first. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, you're the chair.
I'm in charge right now, so.
Never mind, never mind.
Yes, so Councilmember Carlson.
Yeah, I just want to say I agree with the things you said. And if this goes forward, as is, I'll support it. I've got a slightly different modification recommendation. But the, I also want to, in addition to what you said, I want to thank Emily Hinsdale and Sidewalk Stompers for setting these up, and the artists that work on them, and the people in the community that contributed money. I mean, it's like $4,000 or $5,000 just to hire the artists. I've been out personally, painting a couple of them, and it's hot in the hot sun, and you've got like 20, 30 volunteers painting these things. So these are efforts where the community really came out. Many of them are by schools, as you mentioned, which makes it safer around schools. And there's one that I helped with, next to Coleman. And the problem is that the law won't allow us to build a crosswalk if there's not a sidewalk on the other side. And this is something we tried to address a few years ago, but sometimes it's not physically possible to put a sidewalk. And so the, if you can't put a crosswalk and you have kids crossing to go to school, it's a hazard. And so there, besides all the other reasons, there is, there is a really strong safety consideration, not just for these things in general, but when the places where we can't put crosswalks. And, and so what I would, what I would suggest, you know, my day job is looking at things like this. The, when our council does something that the governor's officer or legislature don't agree with, they decide things right away. When we, when Councilman Vera pushed the various things like the apprenticeship ordinance, they changed the law right away on us. If we send this, for sure, it's a political statement, but it's not going to have any impact. What I would recommend, because most of this is really good, if we just stripped out the condemnation part and some of that language, and just sent a letter, you could include the rest of it, but just pleaded with the governor to please allow them in places where they're needed for safety reasons. And they, and you could even say, the ones that have manatee characters or other non-political signs. What I've told people in the LGBT community is, we've got a year and a half until, or a little over a year until we have a new governor, new administration. Depending on who wins, we might be able to paint them back again. And I'm certain that we all would do that. But in the meantime, all the hard work and effort that people put into these, and especially the ones next to schools, I think we, it's our duty to try to convince the governor to not, not force us to paint over those.
Let me respond to it, do you mind if I respond to that?
Yes, go ahead.
So on that language, and trust me, I struggled with the two. And again, this is one of those things that I didn't necessarily, I get it. Again, we don't have any control over this. This is something, because they're holding us hostage on F.D.O. funding. But because of what, one, some of the nastiness of this, this is just meanness. And I don't know if, I don't know if we can bury our head in the sand and mince our words on it. Because when they come for a community, when they come for things, I think we have to rise up to that level of aggression. And honestly, condemning, if we had more power, the language would be more than condemning. But that's the most power that we have, is our language. And I don't know how you can not condemn, especially when these, when these, well, let's slide right back to the crosswalks to classrooms. When I believe we have, I've seen statistics that show the safety enhancements. So how do you not condemn removing something that's in place that may save a child's life? For what? Why, for other, just because you want to target a rainbow? You're willing to, you're willing to put children in jeopardy, crossing streets, because your masculinity is so offended because there's a damn rainbow in the street? I mean, that's just crazy. That is just, I don't know how anybody could see that and not see that that's crazy. I mean, it's, I mean, and you know, it's, it's, I don't know.
Just a quick follow-up. You know, the city had to remind them, but that there is a back-to-blue.
Yeah, exactly.
But they're consistent, and they said, take that one up too. So they're, at least they're consistent in saying that all of these have to come up. I don't agree with the policy. My only, my only suggestion, and you see how far St. Pete has gotten by arguing with them. If we, if we say condemn, they'll take it, make fun of it, and throw it away. They might even do something else punitive against us. If we say, if we say, hey, we really would like you to at least allow us to keep these, we might have a chance of keeping some of them. That's my only suggestion.
Well, I think there's people that are actually suing in other communities. I think, and I'm not even, honestly, I'm not even advocating for that because I don't want to waste taxpayer money. I think, again, I think the language is the most important thing, because at least, at least we can go on the record to say, hey, we didn't sit by and say nothing, so.
Okay, Councilman.
I just want to say that politics is like a wave in the ocean. And guess what? Every way, every wave in the ocean comes to an end. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I'm trying to think of what to say.
Okay, can I, I'll go?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So I tend to err on the side of Councilman Carlson with this. But I also agree, I don't mind if it goes through, that's fine with me. The only thing I wanted to add to it is, there are some of these murals that have been done with neighborhood dollars, where they have raised the money themselves. And I think one concrete thing we can do is we can pay those neighborhoods back. If somebody can show they spent $1,000 painting a mural, like Hampton Terrace said they did, the least we can do for a neighborhood, that's a lot of money. So I think the least we can do is pay them back. And I think that that's something that we can talk about. Maybe I can bring a motion to see what that might look like. But, but I do believe that there's at least that little thing, because most of those were funded by the city, from my understanding, so it wouldn't be that big of a deal. But there are several that were done by neighborhoods, and we should make those neighborhoods whole.
Yeah, if that comes to pass, I would entertain that as well.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, because I received a call, and I spoke with some folks in Hampton Terrace. And they raised the money, and they paid for that median, not a crosswalk, not in the street, a median. And I reached out to the mayor's office, and I said, can they exempt this? I mean, it just, it's art, and it's a beautiful thing. You know, in regards to the rainbow and everything, my wife calls me her rainbow, because I'm the rainbow after the storm, right? So the rainbow has, to me, a more universal thing. You know, in Italy, they call it the peace flag, you know, but.
Peace.
Exactly, but as Councilman Carlson had mentioned, you know, the back-to-blue mural, they're saying, just take them all out, they're distracting. But as you mentioned, you know, the data shows regarding like the crosswalks to classrooms, the awards that were given, the acknowledgement of it makes the road safer. Why? Because people go, what is that? And they slow down, and that's what we need, because we have speeders, and we have people that are distracted with their phones and other things. But this is about the safety of our, you know, this was implemented not because we wanted something pretty, but it is a public safety thing, you know, to improve public safety and visibility. In regards to Hampton Terrace and their median, why? Because I know a lot of people there, and I'm always there. It's to beautify the neighborhood. You know, art is beautiful. My grandmother was a painter. If you look at the painting outside my office, my grandmother painted it. So art has always been a part of my life. And with all the problems that we have in this world, okay, and we have serious problems. I mean, we go outside, there's people that are homeless, houseless. We have people that can't afford housing, people, I mean, I can go on and on. And this is the fight that we pick today, not us, I'm just saying like, this is what is happening. A shooting in a Catholic church yesterday, my mother glued to the TV going, those poor children. We have, you know, she has grandkids those ages, that could have been Sophia, that could have been Mia, that's their, those are their names.
They were praying at the time.
Praying!
The kids were praying at the time.
The church to me is my peaceful place, you know, and it's like, nothing is sacred, nothing is safe. So let's fight crosswalks, let's fight art. That has proven to show, it makes people happy, it keeps kids safer. I mean, there's so many positive things. And here we are that we have to create this resolution to go, you know, we have a $2 billion budget. We have a million people coming tonight to talk about future land use and so many things. And this is what we're doing, and I'm not criticizing you, I compliment you. But it's like, there's so many other problems in this world. And this is what we spend, you know, our time having to fight.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, obviously, I'll be supporting this. There's another part to this, which is what I call community values, and that these murals and crosswalks go to community values, some of which, you know, Tallahassee doesn't support. And we saw it at its ugliest in Orlando. Obviously, we all agree with the mural leading up to Pulse, where 49 people were murdered because they're gay, because they're from LGBT community. You know, the murals that I've seen in our local area, we obviously have the police mural that supports our police officers. I obviously support our police officers. We have murals that point to black history, and how, you know, that we have such a critical ignored black history in our state and in our community, ranging from when 4 million people were emancipated after the Civil War to Reconstruction, at Jim Crow onward to today, ranging to the, to respect and dignity for LGBT population. And so I think that communities have a right to express their values, whether it's for first responders, whether it's for gay and lesbian folks, whether it's on black history, through murals, so long as they meet certain safety standards, which these, according to my knowledge and understanding, do. I do think those community values, so long as they're positive and inclusive, and talk about the family of America, I support that. And why suddenly this is the new outrage from Tallahassee? It blows my mind what these people get so angry about. So yeah, so support it, and thank you for doing this.
Okay, so we have a resolution. We have someone who has proposed the resolution.
I don't want to, I didn't want to shove this down everybody's throat. I mean, if people were comfortable passing this today, that's fine. If they want to defer it to another time, that's fine too. But I wanted to get it out here because it's so timely, so many things are happening, there's so much hurt happening right now. I thought it was timely to have our voices heard.
Mr. Shelby.
Yes, thank you. Just a reminder that what was passed out was an earlier version. The language remains the same, but I've given a substitute version to the clerk with minor changes in formatting and punctuation. And mind you that when, so what you have in front of you is not actually what the clerk has now. But ultimately, what you sign will get signed also by the clerk, and also numbered, and that'll be the official version. So if you want to distribute that one, I would recommend you.
Now, is the one, the one we have is this one I had Tim, is this the updated one?
No, it is not.
No, it is not. That is not what the clerk has.
Yeah, because there's a, there's a lot of punctuation issues.
We can, we can email you, I could ask Tim to email you what the clerk has.
Okay.
So that way, if you should distribute it, I'd rather you distribute the one that's numbered and signed by the chair.
There you go, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion. Yeah, yeah, Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, I just, you missed what I said earlier. I think if we took out some of the inflammatory language and asked him to allow us to keep the ones that are for safety reasons, it would be better. And I'll tell you, you know, I'm very involved in the arts community. The governor went after some of the members of some organizations, the arts community, last year. Some of them were in Tampa, and talked about them explicitly. And my advice to them was, if you pick a fight, think about what happened to Bob Iger and Disney. Bob Iger was potentially a presidential candidate, and Disney lost that battle. It's affected all kinds of things at Disney because they went into that battle. And I think the better course is, we're not, if we pick a fight, we're going to lose because he has the air, he has the national media, the state media. What we can win is to maybe protect some of the safety measures that are in there that are protecting kids. The other ones are going to have to come down. He's not, there's no way he's not going to force those to come down, including the black, the back-to-blue one. But we might be able to save some of them if we, if we just pleaded on safety reasons.
And again, I'll contend that we didn't start it, and this is not, it's not actionable. We're not withholding resources, we're not, you know, all we're doing is take strong decisive wording and based on the actions that he's taken. And I think everything else is just immensive words. And this is such a strong item, especially as it originated at Pulse, it's come here. And now with all of the issues that we have in the City of Tampa over with the kids, the crosswalks, and all the things that are happening, I'd rather not water down the language, because I'm that outraged by it.
Okay.
I'm just going to chip in on this. I understand what Councilmember Carlson is saying, and if that was to happen, then we know why he's doing it. You know, I mean, it's just a political problem. I'm not getting involved with anybody in government, but I'm telling you, them, him, they, her, or whatever, your turn will come to, the way will come to an end.
Okay, yes.
And obviously, I missed the beginning. This, Mr. Shelby, this has been reviewed for legal sufficiency and all that good stuff?
The one with the staple on it.
Okay.
Pardon, what'd you say?
The one with the staple on it. Tim just passed the name.
Oh, what you have in front of you is approved by me as to form, as to the content. I will tell you that I have received a copy of it this morning, and so has the city attorney.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Oh, second by Councilmember Vera. So I have a motion by Chair Clendenin, second by Councilmember Vera.
To make it clear which one we're voting on.
It is the one with the staple, the most recent one with the correct punctuation. Yes, two-sided.
I flunked punctuation, is what I've been told.
So, any other comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye. All aye, any opposed? Okay. Nope, I think, I think Mr. Vera still might have something. And.
Yeah, I have one.
While you were out, Ms. Kapeski, we sang Happy Birthday to you.
So you're gonna have, you're gonna have to roll the tape.
And believe me, you don't want to hear the recording.
She was, she was in a meeting with me, asked, thank you, Hager, for that. No, just really quick, we have a meeting on, or strike that, we have a in-person presentation on September 18th regarding Fire Station 24. And I wanted to motion specifically that this in-person presentation, it's presently set to be in-person, include updates on the following issues, I have it here for a clerk, et cetera, on the design, both internal, external, including current total square footage, recommended stormwater solution with visual map, recommended power line solution with timeline to align with TECO, outcome of the Grand Tree Assessment, preliminary facade images. And I'm reading this just for the record, Hager, by the way, wrote all this for me, as you can probably tell. Percentage of impervious service space, number of employees that will staff the station upon occupancy, estimated date for public input, updated project schedule reflecting key milestones, any risks or opportunities to project schedule, or opportunities, excuse me, and current budget assessments by line item. Just that they be able to opine on this, they can do this in written form for us, but just so they have a response. And I have this here from Ms. Kapeski, that's it. This is September 18th, it's already on the calendar.
It's already on the calendar.
Clarification.
So this is, this is a motion to amend that motion?
Yes, sir.
And you're going to provide that to the clerk?
It's a motion to give very specific request and clarification.
Okay.
So we have a motion, Councilman Vera, adding a clarification to the already existing item. We had a second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Okay, hey, before we go, speaking of that, I know we've. Okay. Hey, before we go, speaking of that, I, I know we did this once before and it's kind of lose our previous conversation. If y'all would go through future agendas, see staff reports, think things, because there's things in here that have been on here for, you know, continued for years. If there's things that maybe we could just maybe remove and update and, you know, reinvigorate it, you know, put a new one on. I think that, just, just take as an IOU. Look at this stuff. If stuff that's your name, you think we can reinvent it, bring it back to council so we can do that. There is one thing. This is a motion. I, I wanted to do this. I have a friend, he's a City of Tampa resident, Manio Rivera. And four years ago today, his son Najee was murdered. There's a picture of Najee there with his mother and his father. He was a King High School graduate and, you know, his. Gun violence. Yeah. Very sad at a party. It's terrible. Tragic. They haven't found the murderers and, and, and his parents have to live with that every day. It was his only son. His only son. He wanted to become a mechanic like his dad and just wanted to acknowledge that publicly. It's just a huge stain. It's a huge stain on our entire society that we can't resolve this issue. It's so sad. Very good. A motion received. We choose not to resolve, yeah. We have a motion received and foul, Councilwoman Mazzacca, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye. I will see you all at 5:01 PM. Thank you.